So being a Cowboys fan there was, but I'm a Broncos fan.
I'm a team one on Saturday, so they beat me.
iPad.
Okay.
So instead of the H G M L.
The right one?
See, okay, good. I don't know what you've done installed here.
Welcome to tonight's study session for December eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. Just for our new council members, we first start with council reports. And I did share that if we see green on, this is in your folder. Abby's just asking so that some things require that we're at a police presence. And so it's just good habit to let them know for sure if we're going or not. So they know how to plan accordingly. So that's what all that's for, so they know their calendar. I sent out an email, what all happens tonight? Don't forget, just I'm constantly trying to look at everybody. And if you're wanting to talk, just give me a hand or give me a nod and I put you in order. I let everybody speak first time before I put you on the second list for the next time around. And as we go through different things, we've got a long agenda tonight. I will just say, do we need a break? Don't be afraid if you're the only one that says yes, then we need a break. So I think that's how it helps you with how this meeting is gonna go tonight. The first thing is city council reports. And I know next week you'll get the list of all the things that you can be a liaison for. So if you, in the last week, since you've been sworn in, have gone to anything, wanna report things, this is where we do it. So council is.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have a request for a poll of council. So last week, about a week and a half ago now, I went to Recovery Colorado. They are a day treatment center that just opened up in Westminster. They deal with a lot of individuals who struggle with addictive disorders such as fentanyl and alcohol and lots of other issues. Very important issue, as we all know, mental health right now is a problem in the city and statewide. I'd love to, they would love to actually come in and give a presentation in Q one sometime where they teach, where they basically just talk through what they do, why it's important. They talk about, they'll talk, they'll talk about fentanyl and all kinds of substances and how to prevent, and how to notice in your kids and your families if something's going wrong. It's just a very educational thing that I think is needed right now. And I would love to get council support for a study session, short presentation sometime in Q one.
This is where we give feedback if it's a yea or a nay, or if you'd like to think about it. Councilor Dema, I'm, yeah.
What, I mean, besides educational, what's the desired outcome?
Education.
Just education.
And awareness building.
And so the audience, it sounds like the audience would be ourselves, or is the audience? How do we get, it sounds like the education is needed more widespread for the city. So how do we make that impact?
So having a study session is a way of, of doing that because residents are watching and it's recorded. So it spreads, but also we can have our communications department spread that video. You know, push it out in our social media. All of us should be pushing it out as well, but it's a way of building awareness by making a study session, by making it public. It's better than a private session.
I'm just curious if there might be an opportunity to do it in a different format, such as like maybe a city council sponsored town hall or something like that, so that it's not on our typical meeting nights, but still would have the weight of council behind it to educate the public and maybe open it up to a different audience, just as an idea. I know that we've done those kind of town halls for other topics since I've been on council. Example would be, we had a pretty big one at Westview Rec Center when I was first on council around coyotes. It was very well attended and it just was kind of a different arena, different seating, you know, more open to discussion and stuff. So in general, I think the topic's important for people to be educated about. I just wonder if maybe there might be a way that we can.
Make it more interactive. I like that idea, actually. Maybe at town, we have a schedule come up, a calendar. Maybe we make one of our town halls at one of the centers. Cause I think there's another one opening in January for children suffering with substance abuse. That open houses in January, but maybe we can do something like that.
Some more conversation?
Sounds like a good idea to me.
Mayor Porton?
Yeah, I would be, I like that idea of having, cause I was thinking it was a little constrained, especially an audience with the council meeting, but I like the idea of inviting a broader community at a meeting, so yeah.
So that's a question for the term. Can you please use with private versus, for-profit versus non-profit entities? Is this a non-profit or for-profit?
Non-profit. But there are some, there are some non-profit, but these are non-profit, they get funded by our.
You know, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't stepping into some slippery ground there.
Can we ask?
Also, there are providers that might wanna participate in a town hall of that sort. I know that District Attorney Brian Mason presented to City Council. His involvement with fentanyl, among other things. And he's, you know, a very good reach out to if you wanted to have a, maybe a cross section of people that are impacted by the issue.
And the director, her name is Stephanie, she mentioned that this would be more than not just her, but other specialists in the field and what they do, so a group.
I was gonna say, our, the Jefferson County Coroner, Annette Cannon, is very involved in this topic. She just published an article about fentanyl cases in the county just last month. I don't know how wide we'd like it. It sounds like we want this particular audience, but there are several people and experts like her we could invite if we wanted to make it bigger.
I would be for that. I mean, I think that I couldn't imagine the conflict if it's opened up for anybody who's impacted. The mayor and I attended, what was, what I was presented as a town hall that included A.G. Weiser, the coroner, some of the commissioners from Jeffco, some different school heads, I don't remember who. I think one of the represent, Rep. Bird was spoke, was gonna be there and might have been.
She got there late.
Yeah, so I think it'd be good as long as it's well publicized. Because I mean, the conversation was certainly worth people hearing, but there wasn't an audience. And so I guess that's the reason that I made my recommendation is that would have been a good time for people to get educated. And I certainly learned a lot in that conversation, but there was, there was no public there. It was just electeds or officials, probably about ten of us, I would say. You know, but it was just for our benefit, it seemed.
Anything else?
No.
Counselor.
I don't know if now would be a good time. Is it okay? I don't know if I should ask for a moment of personal privilege or how that, how it works. But is it okay if I comment about something that's not an event I went to?
Sure.
Okay. So I'm, I'm new on council, and so what I'd like to bring up is you probably already know I'm non-binary. I use they/them pronouns. I understand that that can be difficult, so I just ask for respect and that you try. And if they/them pronouns are not comfortable for you, my name is a perfectly acceptable pronoun to use instead. So if you could try out of respect, I would really appreciate that.
Counselor.
Yes, so last week I attended our first Drinking Water Cat and that was very successful. We had a pretty full audience, I think only one or two people couldn't attend. And it was really just to get the ball running. It was our very first meeting, so it was introductions, it was an overview of the project so far. And we had a brief history of the project, as it were, to remind folks who either had been involved before or are stepping into it for the first time. And so that went really great. We all got to meet, the folks there were very, I could tell that they were very involved. So we're gonna have a very responsive group there, and that's really good news. The next meeting is not until next spring sometime, and so this was, they wanted to make sure that we had the meeting before the holidays, get us acquainted, and so that we can jump in and get going when we do have our next meeting, when we have more information.
Counselor Ireland?
I felt like a fire hoses hit me last week. I went to the Police Officer Awards Ceremony, which was very nice. I'm proud of our police and what they do. I also went to the menorah lighting with, with Nancy, which was really a great event too. And appreciate being invited and be able to witness that, cause I've never done that before, so it was a great.
I attended with Counselor Ireland and Mayor McNally the police awards on Thursday, which was neat to see. Get to recognize some of our folks. And then we, the three of us, attended the city staff holiday party, which was also fun. Today, this afternoon, I was on a chamber update with Jamie Chavos, who's the new CEO over there. So they had really just shared about what was on the agenda tonight. Also talked about which of new council members had joined council. And just, she had a handful of questions, actually, that they asked me today that I sent over to staff. And then I'll share back once I get an answer. Some of it was around the dog park on Sims and some of it around speed changes that I wasn't really sure, you know, what they were referring to. But it was a good meeting and just kinda shared, you know, kinda what our next couple of months look like as far as onboarding and strategic planning and some of the new thing, or things that happened after we seat new. It was a good full half hour conversation with Jamie. And they had Dave Carpenter, who is the head of the Government Affairs for the chamber, so that was it for me.
Wanna explain how this all works and are they gonna continue interviewing?
It sounds like, it sounds like that they are. You know, she kinda gave the same intro that Juliette used to give when she was in charge. And it sounded like her intent was to circle around with council. I think maybe they reached out to me, cause I'm on the Government Affairs Committee and happened for some time. And so I was asked late last week if I would do it. I think they kinda were trying to get, get their bearings again and get, keep momentum moving. So I would anticipate that you guys hear from her. If not, and you wanna participate, certainly I would recommend to reach out, cause I know that we all have busy calendars. And if you can figure out a half an hour on a Monday morning with them, it's good. And usually I know that they would typically work with our schedule. If, you know, if maybe you wanted, it was your week to do it and you couldn't do it the normal time, they would, you know, work with you on after hours or something, so.
You can do it Tuesday.
Yeah, I know that former Counselor Emmons had to do it sometimes after hours with her work schedule, so. But good conversation, so it does sound like that they're gonna continue, which is good, I think. That relationship with the chambers, we've worked hard as councils, as well as staff over the last handful of years. We have a good relationship there, and I hope that continues.
So I attended in Counselor Jabot's stead, the Rocky Mountain Community Noise, Rocky Mountain Airport Community Noise Roundtable. It's a lot, it was a big handful to say. So the public comment was provided that, I mean, overall, people were concerned about some of the new flight paths. And I'm catching up, so I don't, I'm kinda learning as I go with where they are right now. But they, I know that some of the new flight paths for, just get the term correct, the VFR training, you, the VFR, voluntary flight routes, or something like that. It's, it's, there's, there are different routes that have been, the consultant that we're working with, that has been hired by the Noise Roundtable, who's been working for a while. They produced different routes that are voluntary flight routes that can be taken, that are outside of, or at least trying to minimize the environmental impact, the noise and any other type of impact to the sensitive areas like the residential development. And so a lot of people are just still kind of providing comment. They don't feel like it's really going to help the, the noise that they are experiencing. They still feel like there's been an increase in noise, particularly because of the increase of flight school activity, which is a lot of shorter flights and that circle the airport. So I'm just reporting on these comments that have come in. So it's still just, it's, it's difficult to contend with, cause a lot of community members are, surround the airport. It's not just Westminster, there's a lot of other communities like Superior and Lafayette that have, have continued to voice their concerns. So Jason Stoddard, who is the consultant, said that right now FAA is looking at these alternative flight paths and they will make a determination on which ones are viable. And if some are not, they'll provide reasons as to why they're not. And then they can be moved forward if, if the FAA approves.
Can you answer a question? Is it fly all twenty-four hours still, or you know that?
They, um, they try and minimize the flights between, I think, ten P M. and seven A M. That the hours.
Well, I mean, there's not like a hour cap, but one of the voluntary recommendations that, and this wasn't even from the consultant. This was from a member, I think out of Superior. They have changed some things and, you know, again, this is not mandatory. They had to voluntary do it, but they adjusted to do different runways past ten o'clock at night. And that was one of the things that went to the FAA, they didn't have a problem, the airport didn't have a problem, the flight schools didn't seem to have a problem. And I can tell you, living in that community, I've noticed a difference since they've done that. But again, most of this stuff is voluntary, because at the end of the day, the FAA is the one that determines where they go. The other thing is, even with like using those different runways, if they determine, either the FAA or the pilot determines that the runway that, you know, we've said, you know, could you not use this one, is a safer route, they will still use that runway. So there's not a lot of hard fast, you know, you can't do this beyond this time just because of the way that, you know, the authority of flights works. So it's a complex issue. I think it's where people get frustrated. I think a lot of times they feel that we should be able to go in and say, hey, you know, this is affecting our residents, so you can't do that. But the reality is, is once the plane's off the ground, it's no longer under the authority of anybody but the federal government FAA entity.
And they're trying to, with these routes that are proposed, trying to get the flights primarily over roadways like U S thirty-six. And so, but they will have to loop back, so it's not perfect. The consultant said that they would hear back from the FAA and, in the next couple of months and that he would, he anticipates coming back early next year to let people know what the results are.
And when they get rid of the lead and the fuel, that's up to our, our national folks voting on that. It's, you know, and I saw the ton of emails we've gotten today. We can suggest, we do talk to our delegation at the federal level, at the state level, at all levels of government. We don't control anything. And you've called C D P H E, and have they returned a call yet?
They've returned the call, but not interested in coming and having that conversation.
So we can only do so much. And so people want, you know, us to be able to do some things. It's not in our ability to do. Counselor?
Yeah, and just to add on, I know, I appreciate, one, you going, cause I did have people who didn't see me there, so figured we didn't have somebody there. And I shared with them that you were there, that Mayor Porton stepped in for me, and I appreciate that. But, you know, to address some of the emails that are going on, along with what the mayor's saying, Jefferson County did move a plan forward to move away from the leaded fuel faster than they have to. And so that was a press conference, what was that, probably about two months ago that they did? They purchased some different, or helped the providers of the fuel to move ahead with vehicles that, you know, they didn't have to do yet. So there, there's movement around it, but it's difficult. And one of the things that I saw flying around is about proper representation. I think that one of the challenges in the time that I've been on council and we've been a member of the, the C N R is you have so much turnover. And so this isn't something that we can go in and strong arm and it happens overnight. One, we don't have the authority, two, we're working with partners. And our best opportunity, in my opinion, and obviously, you know, we should speak as a body of, you know, once four people say something, but our opportunity is to work with our partners and make sure that we're all aligned and that we're pushing the, you know, the same message to our partners. But one of the challenges has been the turnover. And if you look at the C N R right now, they have at least two members who have changed, I think three members that have changed. And that, you know, as politics goes and elected positions go, that, that's a challenge, because then you're always have people who are coming in and trying to learn it. I haven't even been the rep that long, although I was once upon a time before. So, you know, I'm still trying to get back up to speed. So, you know, I will put that across to the public to understand that, that it's, you know, just changing to a new person and they're gonna have a learning curve of figuring it out. But I do think that it's important that we figure out who's gonna be the backup ongoing so that there's two of us who can make sure that we're, you know, abreast to what is the current thing and what we're doing. Because there is actual movement that's happening now that hasn't happened in all the time between the things going on with the consultants. And no, it's not perfect, but we are moving the needle. Maybe it's not as far as some people would like the needle moved, but it's changes that haven't happened in the whole time that C N R has, you know, been there for the Rocky Mountain Airport.
Are you partnering with other cities that are impacted? Is that who you're partnering?
The, this, so the C N R, the Noise Roundtable is the avenue that the FAA gives you in these situations. And the way that the FAA basically sets that forward is it has to be a member of each, an elected member from the communities that are affected. So that's who we're partnering with. So there's Arvada, Superior, City and County of Boulder.
Superior.
Yep, Lewisville, Superior.
And Brewville.
Yep, so, and Jefferson County has representation, as well as that, we actually have a member of the FAA who comes and is with us at every meeting, and as well as representatives from the airport. And that, the, back to the authority piece of it, in this, you know, for those of you who are new on council, the, the authority piece of it is FAA, but this is the way that the FAA lays out that they will listen to you. And they have very specific rules about all of those affected municipalities being, or affected entities being a part of it. That is part of the reason when Westminster pulled out, that we decided to go back, because we were hamstringing our neighbors if we didn't participate in it.
Just wanna clarify one thing, or two, two, two things. One is, what happened to the president, the, so the director? He left? Did they say anything about why?
Not at the meeting, I was.
Do we know why?
The, the official thing was it was a, it's a H R personnel issue, and that was what we were told.
And the second thing is for the public to know, there is movement as to what's happening, but that's only because of these last, really twelve months that us in this room, people outside of this room, we have been pushing this issue for change and for something to happen. And if it wasn't for the public coming and making a big deal of this, then we wouldn't have seen the change that we have seen. So I don't want them to stop making comments, to stop the, because that has been a big reason why we're seeing this incremental change. But they should continue, because this is a really big deal.
Um, so there was not a Dr. Cog meeting last week, but I, I just wanna, I saw, well, yeah. Always we have a lot of emails going back and forth. And so there's definitely interest in, and I think a lot of us shared that in terms of understanding what the timeline will be for figuring out our wards and, or having at least a recommendation for how we might split up into wards and what that process would look like. So I just wanted to highlight that. The, and I think one thing that might be helpful, because I think we'll continue to have just questions about how certain properties are going, is if there can be some regular update on some of our key property holdings, like the Grange and Knox Court and Sheridan, you know, the Sheridan Green site. Just to think about, you know, is there an update that we could have that just lets us know where things are at?
Grange is on towers?
Not the Grange.
Rodeo Market.
The rodeo market, sorry, my brain. Yes, so rodeo market and just kinda, I know we've had, we'll have these conversations, we'll get engaged in what's happening and then it just, it goes quiet, cause I know staff's working on it, but it would, maybe it can be integrated into something that we get on a regular basis. That's, that's all.
The greatest news of the day was I saw we're tearing up that icky stuff in front of Tri-City. So that was woohoo. City manager and myself and chief were at Benoit Torres Hanukkah Second Night Celebration Friday night. And that was great with, they had a packed house. And as Counselor. Um, and as Counselor Ireland said, we had the Chapod House um Hanukkah last night up at the orchard, um, PD Awards, always wonderful. And um Christmas party, whoever, all of the elves were that put that on, great food. I heard you used, I think, um Westminster Public Schools and their tables were terrific, so thanks to everybody. Anybody, anything else? All right, that brings us to city managers' report.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, counselors. Um, a lot to talk about this evening. Uh, we've got five presentations, four information items, but before we move on with that, um, we'll start with the managers' reports, so next slide. Uh, so first, I just wanted to make sure that uh the council and the community are aware. Um, we have a um a peace poll that is resident at Sheridan Green Elementary School. Um, and we had a teacher who now works up in Longmont, but she was on staff at Sheridan Green back in the early two thousands. Um, and she had been stationed, uh, she met her um husband in uh Japan, where he was stationed in the Navy. Um, and I guess peace polls were something uh that were quite common in Japanese schools there. So um when she came back um and worked here at Sheridan Green, uh, she undertook an effort to bring the peace poll to uh the elementary school. Um, it's erected in front of the school now. And she contacted us and had heard that the school um was no longer open and was under consideration for demolition, et cetera. Wanted to know what was gonna happen with that peace poll. Um, there's a photo of it there on the right. And so I just wanted to make sure that the council and the uh and the community are aware that, you know, that's one of the items that we plan on integrating into whatever memorial um we leave onsite in the park expansion. Um, but that will certainly be something that our Parks, Rec and Libraries Planning and Design Team um uh integrate into uh whatever memorial is uh is left at the Sheridan Green um uh extension of the park there. Um, and so we just wanted to make sure everyone was tracking that. Next slide, please. Um, next one, uh, as mentioned earlier, we did have the kickoff meeting of our drinking water facility, Community Advisory Team, or CAT, was this past Wednesday at six o'clock. Um, we es- uh established the CAT specifically um to look at what the um, what the site is going to look like from a site layout perspective, what the site will look like from uh materials used, aesthetics. Um, and so it was per- very, very purposeful for us to reach out to neighboring neighborhoods, um nearby neighborhoods and invite members of those communities to sit on this uh team. Um, and then some of the businesses that are located there in the area of Westminster Boulevard and one oh fourth. Um, and so um, you know, it's, it's just another part of our citywide engagement process as we prepare for um that construction. Um, you'll see a picture on the lower right, that's um actually our uh our trailer that's onsite um at the uh facility. Um, great place to hold these types of meetings, and so um we're very, very excited about this kickoff meeting. Um, and then just uh on that one, two, three, fourth bullet, um, you know, we'll make sure that we continue to share this information with the community. Um, the uh, um, this will be listed on the project email list serve, and so if anybody wants to get uh put on that email uh list, please let us know. Um, we do have a uh a website specific to this project, and it's listed there, waterfacilityproject@westminsterco.gov. And if anybody wants to look at the slides that were presented to the community action team, learn more about the project, you can go to our city website slash drinking water project. But I just wanted to make sure everybody understands that that uh team is going.
Could we, could we get a list of who's on, who's CAT?
Absolutely.
We haven't seen that, so it makes it very difficult when somebody asks and we don't know, it looks like we haven't communicated well.
Sure.
Just wondering, are these uh meetings recorded or is there some way outside of just the um s- sharing the slides that people can know what's being presented? Or is the public welcome to um observe these meetings or how does that?
Um, from a space perspective, it may be a little bit difficult to uh to put more people in there. Um, however, uh, I'll have to look at, see whether we, that's something we could record and broadcast, you know, on social media.
Even just a recording?
Sure, we can take a look at that. Next slide. So Westy Win, obviously our holiday lighting ceremony last uh Saturday, December second, uh twenty-five hundred attendees. Um, music, food ven- vendors, um visits with Santa, just a great event um for the community and the city. Um, it was sponsored by Intermountain Health, and we had performers from the Westminster High School Siren, Sherwood Elementary School, um, the Doral Academy Choir and Dance Squad, Westminster Dance and Baton Company and Mountain Range High School Chamber Choir. And so just as a reminder for the community, is that key point, last bullet. Um, if you weren't able to attend that event, the Westminster Rotary is onsite here uh next Saturday from five to seven PM, um, hosting Santa on the plaza. Um, and so that's uh another opportunity to come enjoy um the lights and activities. Next slide. Uh, this is just a great news story, you know, people um uh don't necessarily appreciate sometimes how empathetic our police officers are. And that's certainly been my observation and experiences over the past thirteen months. But um here on November seventeenth, we had two police officers respond to a shoplifting call at Walmart. Um, they contacted the male suspect, he was cooperative, advised of his Miranda rights, um, and he confessed to the crime. He was uh stealing items, um, but uh, you know, they asked, why are you stealing these items? And they were hygiene items. He's homeless and he was stealing items so that he could uh get himself cleaned up. Um, and so he did receive his summons, but um, you know, the suspect asked if the officers um could do anything to help. And one of the officers pulled out his debit card, uh paid for um the items that the individual had stolen. Um, and then also uh purchased towels and soap so he could uh complete the shower. And so I just think it's a great example of how our police officers do um in the community. It certainly displays our city uh employee spirit values, um, and uh, you know, a good example of grace, empathy and compassion. So I just wanted to share that with the council and the community. Next slide. Um, and then uh we've just hired our new Parks Recreation and Libraries Operations Manager, Alex Reeves. He's here in attendance this evening, Alex. Could you please stand up and just um uh say hello to the group?
Hello, everyone.
Yeah, and we are very, very glad to have him. So you can see the list of accomplishments, and you're welcome to sit down, Alex, but list of accomplishments there. He's coming to us from the city of Greeley. Uh, and uh prior to that, he was with Orange County in Florida. Um, and uh just very, very excited to have him on the team. Um, and uh expect uh great uh, great uh production and results from his efforts um in that role. So again, uh Alex, we're very, very glad to have you join our team, okay? Uh, and then next slide, uh another uh hire, but this one's an internal hire. And so um you all have known John Burke um working in our Economic Development Department. Um, but he was recently selected um through a national process to serve as our city engineer. So John, if you wanna stand up, I know folks know you, but may, folks in the community may not. Um, but you can uh, you can see all of the um accomplishments there, but certainly, you know, he's a professional and uh engineer here licensed in the state. Um, he's worked in the private sector, he's worked um certainly in our government sector. Um, he's, I thought this was uh awesome, currently the president-elect of APWA Colorado Chapter. Um, and he's also authored a book, um, and so um just a man of many talents, and we're very, very glad to have you in that new role. So again, congratulations, John, okay?
Is something else out there that's distracting?
It's the overflow and there's a delay, I was just contacting the AV team to see.
Next slide. And so some things to know, uh tomorrow evening, five thirty to seven PM, uh the Housing Needs Community Meeting. This is uh at the Community Clubhouse Barn at uh a thousand fifty, or correction, ten thousand fifty Wadsworth Boulevard. The Planning Commission Meeting tomorrow evening has been canceled. As I mentioned, Santa on the plaza goes this Saturday, five to seven PM uh here um at City Hall. And our next city council meeting is Monday, December eighteenth at six thirty um PM here in Council Chambers. Next slide. Um, yes.
Good question. That's the, that Housing Needs, that's the Housing Needs Assessment Draft Review, right?
Correct, yes.
So that's the first time Phil Tiller gonna be seeing that, very important.
Big deal, big deal. Okay, next slide. Uh, and then tonight we have four information-only items, and so um for the new counselors in attendance, our study sessions, um, you know, are hosted on typically the first and third Mondays of the month. Um, and we bring information uh to the council that the council wants to dive into. Um, and it really comes in two forms, it comes in information items, um, as these four listed here, also come in presentations. Generally, the presentations are things that are uh better shared visually. Uh, any information-only items are tip items that are typically written documents and updates. So um tonight's information items are our twenty twenty-four legislative policy statement and City of Westminster twenty twenty-four lobbying protocols. We also have a a short-term rental licensing update, the council had asked for a six-month update. Um, so this is our first one of those as they become a routine item every six months. Um, we also have an update on the adoption of the twenty twenty-one international building and fire codes. Um, and then uh there is an agenda memo on the concept plan review supplemental information. That was really for our new counselors so that you all had an opportunity to understand what tonight's process of three of those five presentations are. Um, we'll also uh share the first set of slides when we do the Uplands presentation. We'll kind of walk you through some of those thoughts too. But this is your opportunity on those information-only items. Uh, if you have questions, concerns, thoughts, um, you know, as we've done, certainly since I've been here and well before, if you have questions, comments, concerns, um feedback, this is your opportunity to either ask or to provide those. Um, we have staff in attendance that would be happy to answer any questions. And so we can certainly um uh go down that path. I'll go to one more slide and then we'll open it up for any questions that you may have. Um, and then as always, for the uh city council and the community, um, the city wants to be accessible, responsive, transparent, accountable. Um, if you have questions, comments, concerns, feedback, thoughts, we wanna hear about them. And so you can call me at that number listed there, three oh three six five eight two thousand six, or you can email me directly at mfreitag@westminsterco.gov. And as always, um, you can uh follow us on X, you can like us on Facebook, you can check us out on Instagram, or you can ring our bell at uh Next Door. So, any questions um on the information-only items, we're prepared uh to move into the um presentations. So could you go back a slide? Are there any questions?
Let's start with the protocols for legislative policy. I had a couple of things on the first page too. Um, they went through if a council votes in a public forum on an issue or a bill, um, and we haven't taken uh a stance as a a group, we shouldn't be voting in my mind. And and for the twelve years I have been mayor, um, before and now, whether I'm at a Metro Mayor's Caucus, whether I'm at the Northwest Mayors and Commissioners, whether I am at cog with the Adams County folks, my statement is, we have not taken a state, uh, 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 thing on this. We haven't said yea, nay, or how we would like to amend it or anything, so I'm abstaining. And as soon as we have uh something that we can talk about, then I go back and tell them. But I have, I have always abstained, I'm not the only one in any meeting that has abstained because um as mayor, I can only speak for what this body says we're going to do. And that should hold for any counselor, um, because we'll get in a real jam if a counselor is at a meeting, votes however they wanna vote, and we come back and vote a different way of supporting or not supporting. Um, that just gets very, very messy very quick, so I just think that should be cleaned up.
I do have a question, so we do have our um, our policy guide, right? That if it's in, if it's consistent with our overall legislative agenda and our, you know, and the policy.
This doesn't say that.
Our po- our protocols isn't saying?
Not what I read in in the legislative statement.
Um, well, I guess the question, or what would be helpful, because prior, before um Jennifer Basket left and she was our transportation um planner, um, she would provide an overview, for example, of a Dr. Cog agenda and to say, these things are consistent with our uh legislative policy. And so these are the, you know, so she kinda run through it, it was really helpful. And um, so I have not abstained from um decisions that were consistent with that legislative policy for Dr. Cog. So I just wanted to, but I have, if we haven't gone over anything, so, um, or if it's outside of it.
Yeah, I just think it should be pretty clear, or we could get into a mess, counselor.
They, when I was on uh one of the liaisons for CML, we would have a similar thing before meetings where staff would provide, here's staff position and we would vote that way, because it was in accordance with what we agreed our policy was for the year. So I think that that's fine as long as we have those things. I think my agreement with what you're saying though is, and we, and we've had this in the past in my time where a council member takes a position, and you know, each of us have our individual voice versus the body's voice. And so like this makes it sound as though you could vote or vote speaking for the body and then report back. And I think that that's problematic. If you're gonna speak and you don't know that it's for the the body, or sometimes maybe you have a different opinion than the body, then you, you know, what has happened in the past is the council member would say, here's who I am, I'm speaking on my own behalf, that this is my position on, you know, A, B, or C. So I think that that's really important for each of us to approach those kind of situations as such.
Um, okay.
I, if I could read uh from the second paragraph on the, on the second page of the protocol. Um, in those instances where the city has not taken formal action on a bill or issue, and the bill or issue is clearly aligned with the city's position as outlined in the adopted legislative policy statement, the counselor should use his or her best judgment in casting a vote that aligns with the legislative policy statement and is representative of the city's position. Um, in instances where an issue or bill arises for a vote that is not discussed within the policy statement, the counselor should indicate that the city does not have an official position, um, and that the issue will be discussed with the entire council before a position will be shared. So I think it does, it does contemplate that, I see, I see where you're referring to in the next paragraph. I think that paragraph is contemplating um if something happens in one of those instances where we haven't yet taken an official position, either that's in an alignment or hasn't yet been discussed, if that could be reported back, so we could take action on that, I think that's the request there.
And then we get into if testimony and individuals going down and doing their own thing, and even boards and commissions, folks, my big thing is how do we inform and instruct and educate the boards and commissions if they go down to testify? Um, there wasn't anything in there, and um I've never been a liaison, as a liaison, I've never heard anybody mention in any meeting um what a order or commission person should or shouldn't do as far as um testifying down at the Capitol. And um I just warn us, because it does say in there, if we go down as a person, we take off all of our name tags and whatnot, I'm still telling you, um, the newspaper and whatnot's gonna say, council, or Mayor, Mayor McNally testified on blah, blah, blah. Doesn't matter what you do, you, you have taken on a hat that you cannot remove. And so I just think we need to remember that because you'll show up in the newspaper. Um, and there were two different, I know places, so, and I can't get it up here, but it's just what I read, and I'm just concerned because um we have to remember, we only work as a, as a body together, um, and we have to have clear direction.
I have a handful of questions on, on the thing. I mean, in the past, we've went through this, so, you know, I'm reading it and seeing what the different uh red lines are and taking my best guess at why we added them. Um, you know, being that this is. You know, being that this is a policy statement, can we talk through the red lines and understand what the change is and why we made additions or removals?
Happy to. So the, the, there were a couple of date updates. So I'm going to skip past those. And the first substantive update would be in the policy statement on page 10. So there's four items that we drafted in concert with the municipal judge that discuss funding for innovative municipal court programs, statewide data sharing system, legislation that increases requirements on municipal courts without additional state funding, and opposes legislation that impedes municipal court's authority to establish courtrooms, protocols, and procedures. We actually left in there by accident a few of the notes that the judge had actually drafted as well. So you get a little bit more flavor for his thoughts. Were there any questions on those specifically? All right, the next substantive, substantive change, if you want to call it that, is on page 11. One of our staff members noted that we still had a reference to the previous city vision. So we're proposing to strike that. And then the last substantive change is on page 12. In the transportation and mobility section, we've added the word transit when asking the state legislature to make significant investments to maintain and improve the state's transportation network, including roads, bridges, transit, and multimodal systems. We felt it was necessary to be very clear in that call out.
So I appreciate the context. The only other thing that I would add, especially with three new members, is, I mean, the, it sounds like that this will come before us next, next week. Did I read that right? So if there's anything, you know, there are a lot of things that I've heard throughout the campaign that maybe aren't in our stead, but we certainly can advocate for those different levels of government. And this is the opportunity to do so. So if there is something that, you know, you think that this body should advocate to our, our state delegation about, you got a short amount of time in order to lobby to the, you know, the majority of council in order to get it in this policy. And that's why, with the emails going back and forth, why I feel very strongly about this. I think it's very important that each of you understand what this is that we're doing, you know, and how meaningful it is for the, the session that's upcoming.
So Dave, is there anything that's changed that you don't like?
For me, no. But I mean, I, I've been here. So my fingers are on this and on five other ones. So, you know, there's no substantive changes. I appreciate being read through. I want to make sure that I don't misunderstand why any things added or removed. I think they're pretty straightforward, you know. But there are three people who aren't here anymore. That's one vote away from the majority of council that decided a lot of this stuff. Some of it is carryover and some of it just makes sense. And obviously, staff advocates for what is best for the city. But often times, there are things that this body wants to lobby for to our state delegation that are, you know, important to us as a body and important to our community, but maybe not at our level of government. So I think it's a, an opportunity. I just don't want each of you to miss the opportunity for a whole session until, you know, next year because it just came up so quick after you all received it.
Any other questions on this item or short-term rental licensing, adoption of the 2021 international building and fire codes? Otherwise, we'll move into our first presentation.
I just want to know, as a city, what are, is there anything we're lobbying for right now to the state?
I mean, if you look in that, there's always something, whether it's, if it's funding there. Like last year, for example, there were things around domestic violence that they wanted to change what a municipal court could do. So those, you know, those policies are important. And you certainly, as we go through the session and, you know, we get updates back, you'll see how this kind of correlates and see it play out. Because that, that team, as they go down and they, they lobby, that happens pretty solidly from the beginning of the session. You know, multiple different things that, you know, that the staff is going to be lobbying for and are outside lobbying for.
Things turn around quickly. So as it states in the protocols, you would get an email and we send to one person or we create a meeting. So that's critical. You only send it to the person that we're supposed to send a yes or no to. That person tells us then how the straw poll came out. So when you see that stuff, sometimes they need quick turnaround to be able to react down there. So just pay attention to those. The, anything else on this one? Anybody have anything on the short-term rentals that you read? How about the adoption of the international building code? I only wanted to ask, do we know how much increase per house or apartment or whatever is going to cost, increase in cost?
Mr. Horace, could you come down to the table and answer that, please?
Good evening, Dave Horace, the building official with the city. Depends on if you're talking about a single-family home or something you're talking about. Most of those costs are derived through the, the energy code. And those numbers are very based, obviously, on the size of the home. I don't know if we have a firm number on dollar per square foot or anything like that. It will increase. The, most of those increases are derived from the requirements, the new requirements for energy, additional energy requirements. And those are recouped over the life of the home usually. But I don't have a number for you.
People just ask when we talk affordability and then we add codes that, and I know it's mixing water and oil, but people ask and I don't have an answer for them. So I just thought I'd ask since it was on here tonight. Anybody have anything else under this one? Yes?
Are there codes we have to adopt? Or do we have to adopt them or we have our own?
We, these are nationally-developed codes that are model codes that many jurisdictions follow. So for the, for the sake of the city and for the sake of the contractors that do business in, in multiple cities, consistency from one jurisdiction to another is very, very helpful. These codes are developed by a national body and consensus developed and delve into a lot of things. Do we have to adopt them? We have to adopt some of the codes by state standards. Energy codes are some of them. Electrical and plumbing codes are other codes that the state adopts and requires us to adopt. And I believe there's state funding tied to some of those adoptions as well.
Federal funding?
Not sure about federal funding. I don't believe it's federal funding mandated.
Okay, thanks.
Anything under the concept plan review? And that brings us to presentation of a concept plan for parcel B2 located on the southwest corner of Lowell and Boulevard and Bradburn. And the first concept plan review tonight is for the following development proposal, the Uplands parcel B2 located on the southwest corner of Lowell Boulevard and Bradburn. This is a concept review plan. It is not a hearing on a development application. Its purpose is to allow the city council to learn about the proposed project in its beginning stages and provide feedback to the applicant on the city council's general impressions of the proposal. In accordance with the Westminster Municipal Code, concept plan reviews occur after city staff complete the pre-application review for a proposed project, but before staff perform a technical review for the project. The technical review, which involves an official application for the ODP, PDP, or amendment thereto, will occur only after the applicant chooses to move a project forward after its concept plan review. As part of our review process tonight, city staff will provide a brief introduction and then the applicant or its representative will present an overview of the applicant's development proposal. City council may then ask questions of the applicant and provide the applicant feedback on the proposal. City council comments on the proposal are gratuitous in nature and are not binding on city council, the planning commission, city staff, or the applicant.
Mayor, if I could, before Mr. McConnell speaks, we may have some members of the community that have, are sitting out in the chambers or perhaps here that believe that tonight has a public comment or a public hearing, and it does not. This is a study session and the, the public is welcome to attend, to listen to the conversation and discussion. But there really is no opportunity in a study session for the public to comment. And so wanted to make sure that was clear to everybody that may be listening or in attendance. And so I'll pitch it to Mr. McConnell. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Mayor. And good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and city councilors. John McConnell, the interim planning manager here tonight to provide you with these presentations. Before we jump into the first concept plan review, I'd like to provide you with a short number of slides just to provide you with an introduction and an overview of the concept plan review process specifically to benefit the new council members and interested public. So the purpose of a concept plan review is to provide the city council with the opportunity to learn about a proposed development project at its conceptual stage, ask questions to the applicant, and provide informational, provide informal, high-level feedback to an applicant at that time. Benefits to the city council include gaining knowledge of projects at an early stage and the ability to provide initial feedback to the applicant. The benefit gained by the applicant by receiving this feedback is obtaining a better understanding of the city council's initial concerns before investing substantial time and money into technical design and plan preparation. The focus of a concept plan review is generally related to strategic plan alignment, comprehensive plan compliant, proposed land uses, general site design, and neighborhood compatibility. Due to its preliminary nature, the concept plan may not identify all potential issues that may arise in future technical development review cycles. Concept plan reviews do not involve a public hearing. No official action is taken by the city council in conjunction with the concept plan review process, and no approvals of any type are granted at this stage. Concept plan reviews are only required for development proposals that require an approval by the city council at a future date. These generally include rezonings, comp plan amendments, PDPs, ODPs, if required in conjunction with these approval types, and ODPs involving a multifamily land use. Additionally, all original Uplands ODPs require city council approval and thus a concept plan review. A concept plan review takes place upon the completion of a pre-application review in accordance with city policies and prior to the submittal of any type of technical development review application. I know this chart may be slightly not visible to you at this, at this view. But the concept plan review, as you can see on this chart, is shown as step 1.5. So step one would be the pre-application review. Then the applicable projects move into this process. And then step two, three, four, five, and six are the completion of the development review process. And step four, you'll see that that's the public hearing stage. Projects that are applicable, that require public hearings of the city council would require this step. Public notice for concept plan reviews is required in accordance with Westminster Municipal Code, Section 11513. It includes mailed notice, newspaper notice, and signed postings. The applicant is responsible for the costs associated with the notification process, including the construction, placement, and removal of the posting signs. Notification occurs at least 10 days in advance of the meeting. And the posted signs are required to be removed within 72 hours of the conclusion of the meeting. So this concludes my overview of the concept plan review process. If you have any questions, I, I can answer those at this time. If not, we can move right into the first concept plan review.
I see no hands.
All right, thank you. Okay, this is the concept plan review for Uplands parcel B2. The project is located at the southwest corner of Lowell Boulevard and Bradburn Drive. It's outlined in red on the aerial photograph that's shown on this slide. The zoning map is illustrated on the left side of this side, and the comp plan land use map is illustrated on the right side of the slide. The Uplands parcel B2 property is zoned PUD or Plan Unit Development. And the property is designated residential low-density in the comprehensive plan on your right. The proposed concept is to subdivide the developable area of this parcel into 26 custom single-family lots with associated infrastructure, a publicly accessible park, and a new trail connection from Replace Court to Lowell Boulevard. On this slide, you'll also notice a large amount of green area. And this is part of the overall Uplands public land dedication requirement. And so those are parcels that will be subdivided and dedicated to the city for public purposes. Notice was provided for this concept plan review tonight. The applicant posted three signs on the property and mailed approximately 1,742 notice letters. The notice was also posted in the Westminster window. And all required notifications took place on or before November 30th of 2023. For the applicant to pursue the proposed development plan, they would need city council to approve an official development plan. And this would be in accordance with the approved preliminary development plan for the Uplands. And this concludes the staff introduction and overview. And our applicant is here and present to provide you with their presentation.
Welcome.
Good evening. Is it okay if we go right in?
Sure.
Is that all right? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Marcus Packner. I am a land use and community outreach consultant for the Uplands team. I am joined by Bonnie Nuzelik, who is our principal planner on the site. I want to thank the mayor, Mayor Protem, and councilors very much for this opportunity to address you. I will say, we always provide a few background slides as we transition to the specific site that's before you tonight. So we'll start first with those and then transition to the B2 neighborhood that's in front of you. Next slide, please. So as John just went through, thank you, John, for the introduction. We are here to speak tonight about B2. This is a very unique parcel. I will start by saying for Uplands, for the overall site. As you can see, it is actually more correctly kind of embedded in the Observatory Heights neighborhood. It is south of Bradburn and really touches a lot of that existing neighborhood. It's the only site on Uplands that's fully within that neighborhood. And as such, it's had some unique requirements that we went through in planning this site, more unique than the rest of the site. So I want to call that out. I appreciate the city manager's comment. There are a number of residents here from Observatory Heights today, and we very much look forward to working with them. Again, this is a concept plan and we'll continue to work with them on the actual planning of this site. Next slide. Just thinking about the community snapshot, we always start with this overall update and then transition to B2. Next slide. So this is a slide that we show in all our community meetings that show the overall infrastructure. So this is community or site-wide infrastructure that is being planned, improved, and built on the site surrounding this. So as you can see, B2 is kind of at the bottom left of the screen. But we always show this so people are aware of the sanitary sewer improvements, which are in red. The green there connected to that, the storm drainage improvements that are happening on Shaw Boulevard. And then all of the water improvements that are really site-wide again throughout the site, the sign or the spine or the infrastructure of the site. And we always note, of course, the new infrastructure from traffic as well, including a new full movement intersection on Federal and 86. So these are going on through a separate process. I want to be sure and note at this point, and thank you all, the leadership, the city manager, and mayor and staff. It was suggested that we would do a quarterly meeting on all of these updates. We hosted one in November. We had a great turnout. It is now shown on the city webpage. We are going to do that quarterly. That just goes through the construction schedule, provides background information. And we will do that throughout 2024. We've actually published all of those dates. We would love for others to share that, to drive that turnout so we're able really to go through the infrastructure improvements and people can understand kind of the construction schedule for all of these improvements that are happening on the area. Next slide. We build on that base slide, that snapshot, to show you overall Uplands community and then the neighborhoods as they go neighborhood by neighborhood. So you'll note two important things. A2 and B1 have been approved by city council. And it goes through the dates that those were approved. But then we think it's really important for the public to understand the difference in the processes that we're going through. So kind of the dark orange, those are neighborhoods in the previous. So kind of the dark orange, those are neighborhoods in the previous city review process. Those will come to you through the more traditional, through planning commission, and ultimately to city council. The purple are neighborhoods that are in the city review process, meaning concept review. We've already gone through that. And then kind of the light orange, or orange cross if you're an old Bronco fan like me, that color, those are ones that are just beginning the concept review process, including B2 that we're here to talk about tonight. I always want to say, all of these neighborhoods lead to really a complete community with affordable housing, for sale, for rent, the full picture of what Uplands should be for Westminster. Those are all reflected in these applications. Next slide. This shows probably something that we will always put up during this, and this will never change. This is a slide that shows our PLD, our public land dedication, which is just over 34 acres, and six additional plus acres of View Corridor. We actually have both of those types of open space or public land dedication on this site tonight. So we have both View Corridor and PLD. But over 40 acres across Uplands, again, this was presented in our original PDP and our ODP, master ODP, and will be concurrent and approved throughout the whole process. I should note, we've added this just so people can kind of follow along the infrastructure and the kind of multimodal connectivity that we're adding neighborhood by neighborhood. We've always talked a lot about reflective planning and being able to knit this site back into the neighborhood. So if you look at these colors, it shows a lot about the PLD and View Corridor, but in context of trail and walk, bike and pedestrian improvements, and then roadway improvements as well. So we really understand all the different modes coming into this site and how this will effectively be knitted into the surrounding community. I would note as we transition south of 84th there, down past Bellevue Christian School to this site to B2, you will see, just to kind of point out, from west to east across Lowell, we are going to be adding an eight-foot sidewalk on the west side of the road. There will be a bike way, a strike bike way on Lowell. And then on the east side of Lowell, we're adding a 10-foot concrete mixed-use or multi-use trail. So that gives you a perspective of Lowell as adjacent to the B2 site that we're talking about tonight. Next slide. We always kind of finish this portion of it to talk about what is before you? What did we tell you we were going to do? And are we honoring our commitment in the PDP? So overall, we will stay and will always be at that 40.75 acres required and provided of open space and PLD and our affordable housing. We are at 300-plus units, and we'll come to you with those applications. We then transition right to B2 neighborhood. And as you can see here, we were allowed to have 26 family units, 26 units on this site. We are proposing 26 units. We are under two dwelling units per acre. I noted this because this is part of Observatory Heights, is a very low density, very low residential density to really reflect the existing pattern, the pattern book of Observatory Heights. We have actually more parks than we required, and a little smaller setback, we'll talk about that. That actually leads to more of the parkland and some of that buffering that's in the site. Next slide. I think we'll transition here to Bonnie Nuzelik. Again, Bonnie's our principal planner, and will walk us through the pre-app plan for B2.
Thank you, Marcus. Good evening, everyone. Bonnie Nuzelik with Uplands. Good to see you all tonight. As Marcus mentioned, and John also mentioned, so the site includes two pieces of public land dedication. So we have the 3.3-acre View Corridor in the northeast corner, and then we have the 3.7-acre public land dedication parcel in the south. So those are currently going through the plating process and will be dedicated to the city. So the PDP limited development on this site to the balance of this parcel. So as Marcus said, it only allows, it only allows single-family detached homes at a maximum of 26 of those homes. So this was part of the initial comp plan amendment discussions back in, I believe it was 2020, when we made some revisions to that, and then was further recorded as part of the PDP to really limit that density and really focus that preservation on creating that View Corridor and that public land dedication for these two parcels of land that are so near and dear to the city. This, the site plan also shows the approved street improvements in the southwest corner of this site. So La Place Court and 82nd Avenue, those are street improvements that were approved as part of the development to the, development plan for the parcel to the north to kind of clean up some existing street configurations that were creating some challenges. So you can see what that looks like here. This actual site plan includes one access point off of Bradburn Drive, which aligns exactly with the proposed access point to the north on Bradburn Drive. That access includes a city-standard local street section and then terminates in a cul-de-sac at the View Corridor. So that will have on-street parking, detached walks, and tree lawns. The plan includes 26 single-family detached homes. Those are approximately 40 feet by 125-foot deep home, or lots to allow for custom homes. So these lots were designed to best accommodate the existing grade on the site. If you've been to this parcel, there's a ton of topography that falls from the southwest corner down to Bradburn. So wanted to work with that existing grade as best as we could. The blue, here we go, the blue asterisks on this plan, this plan's a little bit confusing. So the blue asterisks show where the garages are actually located on the site. So the homes on, along Bradburn, those garages that vehicular access for each home is provided on the proposed local street, whereas the southern tier of lots, those garages or the vehicular access for each of those homes is also located on the south along a private drive. Since our pre-application meeting with the city staff, we've continued to kind of study this southern boundary of this property. There's a lot of pieces to kind of work through in this area. So again, on the left side of the screen, you see that cul-de-sac for 82nd Avenue. So that's a new cul-de-sac and turnaround for the existing homes to our southwest. This area also requires emergency access to both our homes on the southern portion of the neighborhood as well as additional emergency access for those existing homes along 82nd Avenue. And then we're also required to do a 20-foot water easement, which requires concrete coverage above it, and an eight-foot trail corridor. So what this exhibit is showing, how the eight-foot trail corridor will connect our private drive on the right side of the screen to the existing 82nd Avenue on the left side of the screen, so that both of these neighborhoods have better emergency access. They'll have a water easement with the required 20-foot of coverage. And then we'll also have an eight-foot pedestrian corridor in here. You can kind of see there's a little bit of a pink tint on this slide. That's showing where that pedestrian corridor will have enhanced pavement or something like that to really delineate between the vehicular access and the pedestrian access to make sure that we're not creating conflicts between bikes or cars and pedestrians. So happy to walk through any of those details if you have questions. But there's a lot kind of happening on this southern boundary of the site. Also wanted to provide a couple of cross-sections. As I said, this site has a ton of topography. So at the upper right hand of the screen, you can see a key map. So this cross-section, if you can see that blue star, this is cutting across Bradburn, going to the southeast. So on the left side of the screen, you see Bradburn right away. And then the site steps up to that first row of homes. So those will likely have two- or three-story homes in a walkout condition. So again, you can see that car in the garage that is accessed off of the local street that cuts through the neighborhood. And then we pick up a little bit more grade, have that second tier of homes. And then those homes, again, that garage is accessed off the private drive on the southern end of the neighborhood or the right hand of this screen, or the right side of this screen. So lots of topography to work with in here, and so we're trying to create those walkout conditions to utilize the grid and also celebrate the views that the site has to the northwest. Here is a cross-section that cuts from that cul-de-sac on 82nd over to our proposed access drive. So there's a bunch of topography between that existing cul-de-sac and our proposed local access drive as well. There's about 10% of slope kind of separating those two uses as well. And then here's just another cross-section, again, showing Bradburn on the left side of the screen, that first row of homes and how it connects to the local street on the right side of the screen. So you can see here that rear yard of those homes, it's a little bit more gentle of a slope. The slope changes as we cross, as we walk along Bradburn. This is probably a more gentle condition compared to that first cross-section that we looked at. One thing to note with this neighborhood as well, it is a custom home community. So as with previous custom home communities within the city, we would propose to process this ODP with very specific design standards for the architecture in place of specific elevations, so that a custom home builder could come in. They would be required to meet those very specific architectural design standards, but would have a little bit more flexibility in what those homes would look like instead of just creating two or three home types that could go on this site.
I'll just note that that was a consistent theme when we did the comp plan amendment with the neighborhood, with Observatory Heights, because it is a little bit of a different neighborhood to have more of that feedback from that. So again, just want to reiterate, nowhere else will we have a custom or semi-custom home. That's certainly not the palette, or what we've talked a lot about on the missing middle. But the fact that this can only have 26 homes on this site has really led to kind of the pattern of what we're proposing on this site.
Thank you, Marcus. Within our ODP, we will be asking for just a couple of exceptions to city regulations. These exceptions have always been anticipated at Uplands in order to comply with the vision established within the Uplands PDP and also provide the much-needed housing within the city of Westminster. The city code supports the need for these exceptions. Uplands is zoned PUD and defined here. I won't ask you all to read this. I'll give you a couple of key points. But this zone district is intended to integrate land use and site conditions as a unit. It's intended to reflect maximum design freedom, to more fully utilize the physical characteristics of the site through the reduction of lot size and absence of setback and bulk restrictions to provide for diversification and flexibility in housing types, housing prices, and overall design, and to encourage innovative development and keeping trend with current design trends. We'll skip past this one. We've continued to study our plan. We no longer need this exception. So one last will be on the list. This one, I apologize, this text looks a little small in this view, but our exceptions really tie to two different key areas. One is internal lot setbacks, and the other is architectural enhancements. So the first line is our front setback, so the single-family detached design standard that's in the city code right now is a 25-foot setback. We're asking for 20 feet. So that would still allow for full-size driveways and also encourage porches, things like that, pedestrian activation items to be a little bit closer to the street. Our second request is side setbacks. The single-family detached standard is for a 10-feet side setback. We're asking for five feet. And then the rear yard setback, the single-family detached standard is 25 feet. We actually meet that on the north row of lots along Bradburn. So we would just be asking for that on that southern row of lots adjacent to that local street. In general, within Uplands, we've really tried to keep our perimeter setbacks meeting the city standards so that we minimize the impact that we have to adjacent properties and really focus those setback exceptions into the internal lot so that they have that decreased impact. This neighborhood, I think, is also unique in that the focus was really on creating those View Corridors and those public land dedications. So the actual development area was condensed in order to capture as much of that as possible. So we're within that 26-unit maximum, within that single-family detached specific use, but asking for some small setback reductions in order to accommodate that. This fourth one, overall landscape area, this one's just CUIA. The city's single-family detached standard is 40%. Our current math is 39.5%, so we might just hit that, but are continuing to study that. And then the last three items are architectural elements, window projections, deck column materials, and pitched roof. So within our ODP, we would like to include very specific design standards for the future builders of these homes. For example, the bay and box windows, we certainly wouldn't discourage those, but would want to offer other opportunities for architectural treatments such as plain breaks or gabled end treatments to provide additional architectural diversity. Regarding the deck column materials, the standards limit that to brick or stone. We would like to create options for that to match whatever the architectural characteristic of that home is. And then finally, pitched roof, the standards have a very specific pitch of 5 to 12. We would like to provide some flexibility for more contemporary home designs or also some secondary roofs. For example, a porch roof might have a slightly lower pitch to better fit the characteristic of the home. So we would work through very specific design standards in our ODP to define what those are, to make sure we're still meeting that same intent and make sure we're requiring great architecture within these homes, but just a little bit more flexibility to better meet the characteristic of each architectural style. And with that, that's our whole presentation. Happy to walk through any details or answer any questions.
Councilor Demont.
I have only one question or concern that I want to bring up. And so this is, I don't remember what hearing we heard this in, but with the removal of the access to the Observatory Heights, one of the things that was, I thought was asked about prior was about potentially having a cut-in from that cul-de-sac so that there was additional access. And I don't see that here, and I know that was something that I thought that was going to be potentially worked on. Is there still any ability for that to be a thing?
So we, we've definitely looked at that. I think the biggest challenge here is the topography of the site. So currently, the 82nd Avenue elevation versus our local access is about a 10% slope. I believe city standard for streets is 6% slope, maybe up to 8%. In this case, you would also be adding a road that's on the north side of a slope and create some shading challenges. So we had some concerns about that. Also, I think from our neighborhood outreach, we've heard varying thoughts on if they wanted those connected and the potential for cut-through traffic through there. So what we were proposing is to have kind of that bonus, the emergency vehicle access. I know in our B1 city council meeting, we heard some comments about making sure that fire trucks and police could have great access to that. So we're providing kind of a second point of emergency vehicular access to that existing neighborhood to provide that protection. But saw some just kind of topographical challenges in getting those two pieces to fully connect.
Well, and I guess that was some of the concern we heard from people who, I mean, and I recall hearing kind of both sides of it.
Sure.
But one of my concerns that I brought up before was the fact that some of those people at the bottom of the hill who could cut out and not have to go up that hill in weather conditions have lost that access. And so I guess that's my, my biggest concern, understanding it's, you know, a small group of people. I just didn't know if maybe there was a way to, and I know one of the other things was the way aligned before that you'd have speeding people. So I guess what I was hoping in my mind was that you'd have some sort of, even if it was just a one-way out from the cul-de-sac onto 82nd, so that they had an additional way to get out of the neighborhood that wasn't, you know, going up the hill.
Yeah, Councilor, I'll just say, I mean, I appreciate the comment. This shows that cross-section, so that angle from that 82nd, right? And if I remember correctly, I believe there's three properties on that. One of the property owners are here tonight. And you're right, I think we're very cognitive, is, is there a way where they, those three, maybe could have access, right? So I think we'll continue to work through that. They need emergency access. We need two points of emergency access. So there's a lot of shared goals there. I think you're right. It's finding that balance of cut-through, right? Because otherwise, all we've done is end the connection at La Place Court and Bradburn and taken it through the neighborhood on maybe even a steeper route there, right? So I, we couldn't agree more with you. I think we're trying to find that balance of that.
Well, and I mean, and again, this is preliminary, so just spitballing. You know, you're, and I frankly, for the new development, I like this, the way that it comes around the back
Right.
and cuts down and is just kind of that out. But I mean, that's relatively close to that cul-de-sac. And I mean, we're really, we're really trying to address this for those few people that are there.
That's right.
Just so, you know, I, I don't know what options maybe would work for you guys and that the city engineers and planning would be comfortable with. But, but I do think that they have a good point. And I, you know, if I'd lived there all that time and all of a sudden now I gotta try to drive up that hill in the snow, I'd be pretty frustrated too. So I just want to bring it back up, and obviously we're early on. So if there's any way that you could address that, I, I mean, that's probably my biggest concern with this. I do, you know, and I know initially when we rezoned this specific one, I voted against it because I was concerned about how it measured up with Observatory Heights, because, you know, in my mind, they, you know, built those custom homes and expected something like to be next to it. So the fact that you've kind of hit some good middle ground, I'm happy with that. And you certainly listened to those concerns when, you know, I voted on that. Gosh, and that's been probably four years ago, we had that initial one. But if there's one other thing that, you know, you could try to address, that, that would probably be my biggest concern. But if there's one other thing that, you know, you could try to address, that would probably be my biggest concern. Otherwise, you know, I think that this is a decent plan.
Great, thank you.
Mayor Proten?
I want to echo Counselor Demont's request for that connection, so I won't repeat it, but the other question I have is the the development seems to have its back on, sort of facing Bradburn Boulevard where the other homes are facing onto Bradburn Boulevard. And then internal to the development, the backs of the homes are also facing onto one another. It's not the most welcoming, you know, even internally to the development, if it's going to be a custom home development, I mean, ideally, you could flip the homes on the inside at least so that they're facing each other, so it's still a little neighborhood and they're not just staring at, you know, it's just or think about how that development could be facing under Bradburn Boulevard and relate to the development across the way. But I would really encourage you to look at that because the the other thing that I think about with this alley driveway going to the back is that it could be costly to maintain over time for those few units. And so when you think about their H O A needs over ti, you know, and we've seen this happen with a lot of these little infill projects, not just in Uplands, but it's just, we contemplate and think about what that means for these small H O As. So I mean, if you did flip those, they have their backyards in the back and then, you know, the driveways kind of fronting on. So I will let that lie there. And then the only thing I wanted to just understand a little bit better was the window projection exception that you were
Yeah, so the single-family detached standards has a very specific five-foot wide by sixteen. I think that's inch-deep projection on fifty percent of the streetscape. So fifty percent of those homes have to have that box or bay window projection. And so we understand the need for kind of that architectural interest, and I think to your point about backing to Bradburn and backing to that local street, if we keep a layout similar to those, like to me, those need really enhanced design standards so that they don't feel like backs of homes. But the point of this exception is are there other ways that we can create architectural interest by, other than just having half the homes have a very specific-sized box or bay window? Like what other architectural treatments can we do to create that architectural interest, but provide a little bit more variety?
Okay, I'm into the flexibility, I just want to make sure that there's still some
Yeah, yes, we'll need to write some standards, yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Counselor Iron?
I have any parking places or per unit?
So each of these will have a two-car garage and then a two-car driveway, so four parking spaces per home.
Glad that's staying to code. Also, five feet apart concerns me. To me, that's a fire hazard, and in a custom home, I would not want to be that close to my neighbor.
Yeah, so when we did the comp plan, I thank you for the comment, and we'll certainly look at that, Counselor. I think when we did the comp plan amendment originally, it was about kind of the minimum lot size, right? So to give that same observatory heights, that semi-custom custom lot, but to do it on what we thought was a more sustainable lot, right? So not such large lots where there was more water, we wanted a more sustainable product on that. And so part of that was that side setback, so I understand the feedback, but that's kind of a fairly common setback that we're using in Uplands, but I understand your point in a customer semi-custom. Thank you. Sure.
Counselor Carmelia?
Yes, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Where does this development connect to major bike paths throughout the city?
So I'll let, Bonnie's pulling up the map here and then maybe to the rest of the city, I'll certainly defer to staff, but just showing on Lowell itself, that kind of internal lane there shows the green colors, the striped bike lane, so just showing that on Lowell, right? And then, of course, on Eighty-Fourth and Eighty-Eighth. So Counselor, you're not asking just on this site, you're saying where does it go from here, right? And certainly looking at those trail infrastructure, I'll probably defer to the team, but that's our idea of actually providing bike networks that aren't there today and allowing them starting to build those blocks to connect out from there.
Thank you for thinking of that. And then the sidewalks, do they meet the accessibility standards for wheelchairs?
We're meeting all, you know, accessibility and kind of the standards that are required, so I'm not going to say that in a negative way, I think that's a really good thing and I believe we're meeting that. I do want to say that we're expanding, like you can see on the red, on the east side of Lowell. That's a ten-foot concrete multi-use trail. We think that's so important, almost as a perimeter trail on the site and then the sidewalks, but I'll prefer, of course, we're meeting all standards that are in place today. And really looking, as you can see, some of these sites like just south of Eighty-Fourth are not our site, right? We're connecting along the apartments that are on the east side of the road there today to really try to provide that kind of missing network that exists today, to fill that.
I want to keep an eye on folks, just as a general comment, in all future developments, on folks that maybe are not using cars to get from one place to another, because we have a lot of that in the community. Can they cross from one bike path to their house safely?
Great.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Yeah, and I think this slide, there's probably too much information on this slide to really even be beneficial. And we continue to update this with each neighborhood. But in addition to just, you know, the sidewalk network and the bike lane network that was established within the Uplands P D P, you know, adding kind of all those pedestrian crossings show up, wear bump out show up, reducing that space that people are crossing. You know, kind of adding that level of detail with each neighborhood that we're doing, because it's so much more than just the master bike and pad plan. There's, you know, helping people cross streets as well.
Great, that's what I'm thinking of, thank you.
Sure.
Counselor Hutt, do you have anything?
No, I think any questions I had have already been asked.
Counselor Isadie?
Excellent presentation.
Thank you.
Thing I had is what the connection piece that we've talked about forever, that's already been discussed. And I too, when I look at the way the houses look at each other, it doesn't feel community, but that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Okay, Mayor, that's all we have there, you want to wrap this up?
As stated at the outset of this concept plan review, Counselor comments are gratuitous and do not bind or obligate the applicant, city staff, the planning commission or city council to any course of action or future decision. I will close this concept plan review portion of meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have presentation of a concept plan for Erickson Senior Planning. The second concept plan review tonight is for the following development proposal, Erickson Senior Living. This is a concept plan review, it is not a hearing on a development application. Its purpose is to allow city council to learn about a proposed project in its beginning stages and provide feedback to the applicant on city council's general impressions of the proposal. In accordance with the Westminster Municipal Code, the concept plan reviews occur after city staff complete the pre-application review for a proposed project, but before staff perform a technical review for the project. Technical review, which involves an official application for the O D P, P D P or amendment thereto, will occur only if the applicant chooses to move the project forward after its concept plan review. As part of our review process tonight, the city staff will provide a brief introduction and then the applicant or its representative will present an overview of the applicant's development proposal. City council may then ask questions of the applicant and provide the applicant feedback on the proposal. City council comments on the proposal are gratuitous in nature and not binding on city council, the planning commission, city staff or the applicant.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you again, John McConnell here again, interim planning manager to provide you with the concept plan review staff overview for this case. The project is located on the northern portion of the Hon Hewitt property, east of U S Thirty-Six and Westminster Boulevard, south of West One Hundred and Fourth Avenue and west of Waverly Acres P U D. The proposed concept is a phased development of fifteen hundred independent living units and three hundred healthcare beds on the vacant northern portion of the Hon Hewitt property. This seventy-four acre development would contain a mix of one, two and two-and-a-half bedroom units that would be occupied by residents sixty-two and older. Amenities proposed on the site include a medical center, pharmacy, fitness centers, movie theaters, restaurants, cafes and a pool, among other things. Parking is proposed at a ratio of approximately one point five spaces per unit and primary vehicular access would be from Westminster Boulevard with secondary access from One Hundred and Fourth Avenue. All residential development requires the collection of public improvement fees and or land dedication, including public land dedication, park development, school dedication and public art. For this project, approximately twenty-eight acres of public land dedication would be required in accordance with Westminster Municipal Code eleven-six-eight. The zoning map is illustrated on the left side of this slide and the comp plan map is illustrated on the right-hand side of the slide. The property is currently zoned oh-one. The comprehensive plan designates most of the property as employment flex with smaller portions located on the northwest quadrant, dedicated commercial and open space slash major creek corridor. These areas are mostly undevelopable due to being located in the floodplain of Big Dry Creek. Notice was provided for this concept plan review. The applicant posted five signs on the property and mailed nine hundred and sixty-three notice letters. The notice was also posted in the Westminster window. All required notifications took place on or before December first. There are several development applications that would be required to accomplish this vision. The comprehensive plan, land use designations on the site would need to be changed from employment flex, commercial and open space, major creek corridor to a combination of open space, major creek corridor and urban multifamily, which may allow for up to thirty-six residential dwelling units per acre. The precise boundaries of the revised land use designations would be confirmed at the time of the technical review and plan submission. The comprehensive plan denotes specific locational criteria for urban multifamily designations, including locations along arterial streets, adjacency to high-capacity transit and proximity to activity centers along with other development characteristics. And of course, any change to the comprehensive plan designations may impact utility, transportation and water supply assumptions. The property would also be to be, would also require to be rezoned from oh-one to planned unit development or P U D. And a P D P and an O D P would be required to be approved. Additional details provided in the agenda memo. And this concludes the staff presentation and the applicant is ready and to present their presentation. Do you have a question?
I do, and it's around what you were just hitting on, as far as utilities. So do we have any idea to make that change, what that changes, the water requirement?
So this being just a concept plan review, we haven't done a detailed review of the utility system. We do know that going from employment flex to urban multifamily is an increase in the water supply assumption, but I don't have the numbers on the difference with us tonight without doing a more technical review.
I appreciate that, I wanted to bring it up though, because certainly we did a lot of work on that comprehensive land use plan in order to make sure that we were balanced. So if it's going to be something that takes us out of balance, I mean, certainly would have to be addressed. And much like we did with the budget, in my mind, you'd have to figure out where you're going to give that from in order to maintain balance in our comprehensive land use plan. So we haven't had to cross that bridge yet since we made that new plan. But I wanted to at least make it a discussion point with at least staff, you know, so the applicant could hear it as well.
Thank you for that, and with that, I'll invite the applicant to the table.
Good evening, Mayor, councilors, we are honored, starting over here, to talk about this really transformational site. My name is Marcus Packner, I'm a land use and community outreach consultant on this project. I'm going to actually talk why some of us are involved, why specific team members are involved in this project. We are here tonight to talk about concept review, thank you to John, about continuing care retirement community. We're doing this on behalf of Erickson Senior Living. There are three of us, three co-presenters that are going to walk through this presentation tonight. I want to just say, this is probably the truest definition of a concept plan, right? It is the idea of talking about this site and this opportunity. But I will underscore, we have twenty slides, we are going to be very direct to try to work through them. We believe this is absolutely a transformational opportunity for Westminster and this region to address senior housing and provide economic development on one of your key remaining pivotal land use sites. And we're really excited to talk about that. On this slide, you see the full team, we are all here tonight, we have engineers, architects, our company, C R L, Aquaswan Son, who is a water consultant, who can talk to the counselor's question earlier about the sustainability of this site. So we'll all be here, we're certainly here if there are other questions for many of our team members, next slide. I will introduce and we're going to co-present, so we're going to go right back and forth on every slide here. So this is Mary Ann Navarro, she's the Director of Entitlements and Business Development for Erickson. Eric, she'll tell us a little bit about who Erickson Senior Living is.
Hi, everybody, thank you, thank you, we're excited to be here. I'm also joined by Kathy Dilger, who is our Associate Executive Director at our Windcrest Community down in Highland Ranch in Douglas County. Just a little bit about Erickson, our mission is to help people live better lives and that's for our senior residents and also our employees. Erickson Senior Living celebrated our fortieth anniversary this year in twenty-twenty-three. Our very first community, Charlestown, where we are headquartered in Baltimore, Maryland, where, you know, I sit most days, opened in nineteen eighty-three. We have, now we've grown to twenty-two communities in eleven states, so that means we have over twenty-eight thousand residents and fifteen thousand employees. So we have grown and we are excited about the opportunity of possibly bringing a new community here in Westminster. We are a continuing care retirement community or a C C R C, just a little background if you're not familiar. Really, a C C R C is a continuum of care, a service-based senior housing and healthcare product for seniors ages sixty-two and older, although our residents are, our average residents are more like eighty or eighty-one years old. And they would typically come to an Erickson community after having been retired for some time. And then they would, they would live in one of our communities, our average residents lives there about eleven years. And we are a C C R C, again, we have a campus-style approach. I think Mr. McConnell will talk a little bit about some of the services and some of the amenities on our campus. We have that, again, that continuum of care, the independent living units. And then as our residents and their spouses, as their needs change, their healthcare needs may change, then they would, may progress to assisted living or memory care or even skilled nursing right there on that campus. But we also have plenty of amenities, we have an integrated approach to healthcare and successful aging in place. So we have onsite medical, we have a medical center, we have an onsite pharmacy, we offer a transportation shuttle, we have dining, several restaurants on the campus, indoor and outdoor, fitness and wellness and health and well-being amenities. So it's really a campus and a community that we're building, and it's a, I'll let Jared talk about, just sort of the
Yeah, no, it's terrific, we'll go back and forth on this, and I just want to say, and thank you, Mary Ann, for giving the overall viewpoint of Erickson. This shows you probably the most complicated context map, and all of you who know this great city know the context of this site. You think of the quarter-mile and a half-mile rings here, the concentric circles, this really shows the existing. This is one of the best transit hubs in the city. With the Big Dry Creek, the frequent flyer that you can pick up here, then you look at the retail and commercial centers, really in the triangle of opportunity. If you think of downtown Westminster, City Hall where we're at tonight, really all the way up to the promenade, thinking of all of the businesses, the commercial, the restaurants, all of that space. And then remarkably, this site is completely anchored in probably some of the best natural open space that could be there. Natural open space on two sides of us and then across the way, the city park and city field, rec center, really this incredible amenity. But something that has been planned as an economic development, the opportunities are also very clear here. The opportunities are also very clear here. We must continue to enhance this corridor along thirty-six. This is a remarkable opportunity for connectivity. We want to continue to do that from uses to reflect the neighbors around us. We'll talk a lot about that. Multimodal enhancements and really in, go ahead and make further trail connections and enhancements to the open space and parks that are around the site and pull them into the site as well. Next slide. I will mention, as John did, and again, will be very dutiful to go through this quickly. This is the site today. It is primarily an employment flex in the comp plan, the twenty-four comp plan, twenty forty comp plan. It has a little node of commercial and the open space creek corridor because of the Big Dry Creek corridor there. So that is the balance of the site. I would just point you to the right-hand side of this slide for people to really understand this is what's going to happen in the future on this site. These are the type of uses, the scale and the intensity of the uses that are planned on the site. We're not changing the plan. We're not all of a sudden developing something that wasn't planned to be developed. This is what it was planned to be. These type of wholesale fabrication, more of a flex industrial. Then you look at the characteristics. It is planned to be one to four stories unless adjacent to expressways. This is right adjacent to the expressway. This is, has that intensity of use. So this is what this area is planned for, obviously with this incredible opportunity with Church Ranch, one hundred and fourth and thirty-six. Next slide. I do want to particularly note, how did we get here, right after a comp plan change, right? Some of you will remember this. So if you start on the left-hand side and look at the writing in green, that's almost the process of the planning, how we would go through this. We did a kickoff in August of two thousand and twenty-two with the city, but you all were updating your comp plan as councillor DeMonte mentioned earlier. So we came right at the end of that process and said, hey, is it the right thing to do to make kind of a late change to your comp plan, to make an amendment, to ask for a friendly amendment during all that? We actually went to this body to counsel in March of two thousand and twenty-three, and you said, we love the idea, we like the feedback, we like to see it, but we want you to go through a full process, right? We want you to step back and actually go through a comp plan change. So we have taken that step back and initiated a more traditional comp plan change. You also then, right there in red, began the concept review process that we're in tonight, right? So all of these changes, from there, we really embarked on a more traditional outreach. We went on a tour of the Windcrest facility in Highlands Ranch or Douglas County. We had pre-meetings, we are starting that. And then we go through the traditional neighborhood planning. All of that is in front of us. So much is in front of us. The thing I want to point out on the bottom, we have been doing concurrent community outreach from the beginning and we will not stop. We have met with these great organizations. They are giving us feedback, age-wise, Front Range Community College, we're working on a job retention and job training program with them. We have partners because everyone understands the need for senior housing at this site. Next slide. This moved really quickly into a bubble. Again, you all are traditionally, when we went through a process of seeing something maybe two or three years into the planning process. Now you see it as a bubble, right, and are able to give us feedback to really think about this. So again, just over seventy-five acres, you see the balance of this site. You think most importantly, I'll just point out to everybody, there should be and will be perimeter sensitivity zones all around the site. Staff has done a terrific job in the pre-app comments of saying, as we transition into this building envelopes and all of the existing open space, we want perimeter sensitivity. We want additional buffers. So you see it leaves almost kind of a neighborhood envelope of just over sixty-three acres. If you start at the top at noon, if you will, on the clock and kind of go around, you see ma- major full movement intersection at one hundred and fourth coming into the site. You look at trail opportunities to connect Highlands to Big Dry Creek. You look at view corridors there in the northeast corner. That setback from the Waverly Acres neighborhood is two hundred and seventy-five feet to our property line, and then we're going to have additional building setbacks and parking setbacks. Then you continue around. I just want to point out, the other primary point of access would be off of Westminster Boulevard, kind of on the west side of our site. Again, real opportunity there. Significant P L D, as John McConnell mentioned, on this site, we show one suggestion here of open space along Big Dry Creek up towards the Butterfly Pavilion, but this really frames this. If there's ever a site that should be outside in planning, we believe it's this. This is framed by our edges and we need to reflect those and show a lot of that consideration of our surroundings. I'm going to transition now to Jared Carlin. Jared's with Norris Design, has planned many of these facilities and will actually walk through a conceptual site plan on this site.
Awesome. Thank you, Marcus. Good evening, everybody. It's a pleasure to be talking about this proposed community with you all. Not only, I'm a, I live in the city of Westminster, right down the Big Dry Creek corridor from this. And so not only as a land planner, but also as a city of Westminster resident, I couldn't be more excited. Hopefully, my parents that live close by, maybe this is something, a place where they will be able to move to and, you know, who knows down the road, my wife, Annie and I as well. So very excited to talk with you about this. This is the proposed conceptual, very, very conceptual site plan that we have in front of you. There's a lot of work to do, like as Marcus talked about, in front of us to work with you all and the city staff to hammer out all the details. So this is just one, one way that it could look, and we're excited to go through that process. But it's really well situated, you know, with adjacent shopping, the city park across the street to the north. Big Dry Creek Trail is such an amazing amenity. I ride my bike on that all the time. And then the other trail systems that tie into that that surround our site on the, on the east side. We're looking at, as Marcus talked about, having our main entrance off of one hundred and fourth, but you know, we'll work with the city to figure out if that's really the right move. We're looking, we're showing a secondary entrance off of Westminster Boulevard there on the west side and making sure that that's the right move and everything's sort of flowing in the right way. There are thirteen buildings here shown, about fifteen hundred independent living units and then three hundred healthcare beds, ranging in all those types of, different types of services that Mary Ann touched on early on. We have those big time buffers that Marcus talked about on the east side with, with Waverly Acres, Big Dry Creek and a big setback off of that on the northwest, as well as other built-in building setbacks throughout the community. The, the buildings are sort of organized in neighborhoods and have all kinds of amenities in, inside them, including restaurants and grocery stores, movie theaters, pharmacies, medical things, and they're sort of built into those, into the site plan that you're looking at. Couple more things. We have the open space dedication that Marcus talked about of over ten acres. We were playing on hopefully tying into the trail system at the north side of the site, but also at other key areas as we work through with the city staff to identify where those would be, where there would be onsite trail system as well, but then tying into that awesome regional amenity that you guys are all, and I'm so proud of us as well. There are amenities, outdoor amenities as well, amphitheaters, event spaces, dog parks, pickleball, a pool, gardens and trails throughout, and we're going to make sure we do that in a way that's really water-conscious. Both interior to the buildings and the water that's used inside are going to be really pushing the envelope and saving as much water as possible, and you'll see that in the landscape architecture as well. And then I'm just going to quickly run through three views of what the community might look like. Again, they're very conceptual. So the first is right in the middle, right at kind of at our main spine coming off of one hundred and fourth down into the kind of central roundabout area. And here you can kind of see some of the amenity space, courtyard areas, kind of, kind of front door, mixture of uses in the residential units behind. And then just zooming back, kind of a similar view, but just a little bit higher from a bird's eye standpoint, you can kind of get this flavor of how the community is working together. Then lastly, we wanted to take a more, to kind of zoom back even further and look back from the north or from the southeast side of the site, looking to the northwest and getting a much higher bird's eye. And here you can see Waverly Acres to the right, those homes, the big setback that exists, the property line that's kind of there, and then our proposed community with four or five build, the buildings would be a four or five split as they kind of step down the hill. The high point is hard to see here, but it's right, right at the property line, and it comes up the hill from Waverly Acres and, and then the site drops towards the west, and it's hard to see in this photograph, but there is a pretty significant hill where you're kind of looking up. So any kind of thing built on this site is going to have, you know, an impact, even like one or two stories from any views that the residents might have. But there are some views as we walked the site and studied it on the, on the north side, and we're trying to look at ways to preserve the views looking toward the northwest and Long's Peak, and we'll work with the city on how that exactly takes shape.
We also wanted to touch on sustainability. We, in this slide, are addressing some of the values that we heard expressed when we participated in the comp plan process last spring, but it's also, these are also values for Erickson and also values of our residents. So these are just some of the practices that we have in place at our existing communities and would plan to involve here in Westminster. But again, we're looking for ways to be energy efficient and to divert waste. We, we are actually joined tonight by Aquasong, as we mentioned, who is our consultant, who can talk about water efficiency, water savings and how we plan to, to meet the goals of the city on site.
I think if we go to the next slide, just going through this, again, the values, Mary Ann's absolutely right. We wanted to reflect the discussions that we heard from all of you. One thing about this site with that current designation, there was a lot of discussion about workforce development, R and D, economic development. We just want to point out some of the elements that come with this, which is very rare to have a senior housing and then this. We are looking at, you can see the jobs that would be created here, seven hundred plus jobs during construction. It would actually be much more than that, fourteen hundred. We think this is a remarkable job growth initiator, and that workforce development should be local and be part of that. And we've actually started working already with F R C C, Front Range Community College, and the Medical Institute on Clinical Training for their nurses to have programs there to really integrate students actually onto the site in training through our full continuum of care. So again, just starting, but we think this is, again, nine hundred plus jobs at Windcrest in Douglas County. This will be a workforce generator. If you go to the next slide, just to show, we're also very sensitive about city services, not being a burden on city services, and Mary Ann could certainly talk about this, but just to show, these are all the health services that are already built in on-site, right? We know this from all the communities we are, these are integrated, and as you can see, they're fully satisfied. Eighty percent of the, eighty-seven percent of the emergency calls are actually handled on-site without an additional call to off-site to city personnel for those. So again, we want to have that, the pharmacy, the memory care, all of those facilities, really more like a campus integrated on the site as well.
And I would just add that Erickson Health Medical Group is exclusively for Erickson residents, and it's the largest geriatric primary care provider i- in the United States that I'm aware of. So we definitely, again, a lot of the residents come to an Erickson community because of that integrated health approach that we're, we're able to offer. And we also offer the Erickson Advantage, Healthcare Advantage Plan as well.
Terrific. These final three slides, folks, just to go through, the economic impact, we don't want to lose sight of that, this important node along the thirty-sixth corridor, not only the property tax, but then you look at those jobs, we just talked about the payroll and the sales tax. We will not have enrollment in school district, right? So we will not provide students for that, but we'll generate about six, almost seven hundred thousand dollars annually for Westminster School Districts, of course, in addition to the cash and loo. And then I cannot stress enough the third point there about the residents that are here. Often we think of seniors are really the driving force of community, right? And what we create here with scholarships and volunteering, the culture of that community becomes this remarkable kind of community engine that really will full fuel all of this area, and we want to see that real uplift happen. You see our annual or estimated assessment value as well. This is a remarkable impact for a property that you've always counted on, frankly, and we think we're able to provide that and senior housing as well. I'll end with the crescendo on just why and where and why now. We are in an absolute senior housing crisis. This is the senior picture that shows you right now that sixty-five percent plus population is expected to increase by sixty-nine percent from two thousand and twenty to two thousand and sixty. We need eight hundred thousand units in this country by two thousand and thirty. We're building twenty thousand a year. We are going to be woefully short. That's the big picture, right? Then we go next door to where we all live, to Westminster and to the surrounding area. And you know that Sheridan is the dividing line for the county. This is a regional perspective, a county perspective, and most importantly, a Westminster. But this is actually kind of a heat map that shows the orange, the darker the orange is where seniors live today surrounding the site and in your adjacent communities. And you see really the unprecedented growth, our aging of communities in both Adams County and Jeffco, well over fifty percent, right, seeing that. And just to point out that last stat, one in four Westminster residents will be sixty-five plus in two thousand and forty. But I want to say, most importantly, and actually the point of this graph is to talk about the final point of this presentation. Where seniors live today are all the great neighborhoods that you know, and that migration from those existing larger lot homes, family homes, where residents go into senior housing frees up that entire housing stock and is one of the most healthy things that a city can have. So we actually think this is not only about the site, but it's about what happens in all those dark and orange neighborhoods there, where that housing stock is freed up, where families, individuals, professionals can migrate into that and really show the health of that. So folks, we went through a lot. Sorry, I don't know if we could do this justice in an hour, but this is our site. We, we can't wait to hear your feedback and thank you very much for your attention.
Councillor DeMonte.
Thank you for the presentation. I do remember the conversation during the comp plan.
Sure.
I personally have a big heart for the, the senior population. I served on the Board of Directors for Senior Resource Center and have heard a lot about this over the last decade. One of the questions I have, though, and I certainly have heard a lot from residents wanting to be able to age in the city if not at home, which plug for Senior Resource Center, that's what they do. They try to allow people to do that at home, but that doesn't work for everybody. So with a development like yours, and there's other ones, so like in Douglas County, do you have any way to tell how many people actually stayed within that same community and filled out that, that facility? Or there, being that this is a, you know, not just a regional, but a national problem, I imagine you have folks coming from, you know, different places besides just in that adjacent area.
We do some internal tracking of that, and we estimate, again, it varies by community, but between sixty and seventy percent of our residents come from the local area, have raised their kids, have lived in the area, worked in the area. And then beyond that, it would typically be adult children, or I'm sorry, the, the senior would come because they have adult children living in the neighborhood or in the area, and they want to be close to their, their grandchildren, basically. So we find that the majority of our residents have either lived in the community for their, their entire adult lives, or maybe even grew up there, or again, or be, want to be close to the grandchildren. And then maybe a handful, depending on the location, might come from, from a distance, depending on the market.
Appreciate that. Being in Colorado, we have a lot of transplants, so I was curious about what that looks like. In terms of calls of service that might end up on our fire department and our EMS, so you said something like eighty percent is handled in-house, so do you have any idea on what numbers that would be, that's that additional percentage that our department would have to deal with? And the other part of that question, so I know that one of the big challenges they have, you know, especially in senior demographics, is, is really just transporting people and ending up in the transport service. So with that being said, I'm curious of the actual volume that hits our department, and do you have other ways where people are being transported for care outside your facility that might not necessarily hit our fire department?
Yes, so as we mentioned during the presentation, eighty-seven percent of all of our calls are, are calls for emergency services are handled on-site by our staff that is trained in emergency management response and basic life safety and CPR. But of that other thirteen percent, and there could be a variety of reasons for those calls, they are diverted to nine-one-one, and there's various protocols for that. In that instance, we, you know, would call, probably have to have them transported by a nine-one-one. If it were a non-emergency transport, like a patient, you know, elected to go to the hospital, it was a non-emergency, then there would be non-emergency transport. It, it would really vary, like we do have data across the communities. I think we maybe even included it in our pre-application materials that we submitted, and it was like our actual call volume that we receive. You would find that as, like, as a community matures and grows, you, you would probably get more calls. But again, they're concentrated calls, so they're not coming from, they're not coming from, you know, all of the communities that we showed on the map in those scattered neighborhoods. They would be, you know, at the community, coordinated well. I think Kathy could talk to how we, she's, I think she could talk very well to how we handle those calls at, at Windcrest, if you wanted to have her. But we're oftentimes prepared for those calls.
I guess the important thing is to understand kind of a, a metric around what the volume is.
Yeah.
Ultimately, if we have to service that thirteen percent of calls, if it's thirteen percent of a million versus thirteen percent of a thousand, that's a much different number. So I'm just trying to gauge what the impact might be.
And councillor, I'll just say, and for all of you, if you don't know the site, at Santa Fe and C four seventy is where the Windcrest facility is, if you can think of that in Douglas County. It's a very similar size, fifteen. It's a very similar size, fifteen hundred plus units. So we have terrific data on that, right, to show that. So we'll have to provide that, we provided some of the backup. And you're right, what's that impact to city services, that time response, right? Fire has to have a certain amount of time to respond. So Counselor, we'll go through all of that, we know we have to make adjustments for that as well.
Yeah.
And, and that's fine that you don't have it specifically, I just want to at least, you know, this is the opportunity to raise those concerns so that, you know, if and when you come back, there's, you know, there's more specifics around my concerns and other council members. So the, the only other thing that I wanted to address, and this is kind of two-part, this goes to the utility, but also the site. And so, you know, I think as we've heard about this, and obviously this is preliminary, so we're not sure exactly what kind of stories or how many units. Um, I do have concern about, you know, four, five-story buildings potentially. So, you know, with that being said, can you kind of tell me, like, what's the, you know, all these developments have to pencil out financially? So, you know, kind of what is that level where it's, you know, we have to do three-story, we have to do four stories for this to pencil out? Or do you have any idea that, and maybe it's too early to know that? Um, and alongside with that, you know, as I think about utilities, one of the things that we've seen in other developments is if you're going to change the comprehensive plan, um, just because maybe, say, R fifteen would give you X amount of acre feet, doesn't mean that your development would do that. So trying to understand what the trade-off actually is when you come for, you know, a comp plan amendment, that's going to be really what I'm curious about. So, and you probably don't have that to, tonight, but it certainly is going to be how I'm going to look at a comp plan change, because at the end of the day, we have the water we have. And so, um, you know, the density is going to feed into all that. And so maybe you don't have an answer for that tonight, but I wanted to at least, uh, raise those concerns, um, understanding that, you know, typically these kind of senior living, uh, campuses do have some density to them because of what they are. Um, but we need to strike the right balance for our community and our resources. So, um, you know, I'm not necessarily going to confront answer tonight, but I wanted to at least, right.
Yep, we appreciate it very much. We'll look at that, and I'll just point out, just to point the Counselor, the point here, and I, sorry, this doesn't show it. I stood today in Waverly Acre Park, which you all know is just immediately adjacent to that. That slope is very profound up to the edge of that property. And I'll just be transparent because of that. A, a one or two-story building is going to impair a view across that. The neighborhood is actually much lower. So I'm saying that from a respective or a perspective, the existing comp plan has that one to four-story plan. Completely agree with you, I think there's great opportunities for view corridors and working around that. So we're going to really focus on that, and because of the way this works yet, we haven't really worked closely with the Waverly Acres neighbors, I want to be very clear about that. And I think we have great opportunities to go figure out how do we drop buffer and transition that side.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Counselor Osadi.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm so excited about this. Like I said back in March, you know, this, we all know how important senior housing is and aging in places. But there's one stat that was on your slide that wasn't on that, that wasn't on your slide, and that's the fact that in this area, our senior population will double in less than ten years. We're not ready for it, we don't have housing, we don't have services. And this is so necessary at this point in time, that I just wanted to start with that. Um, so thanks for bringing this forward, I wish you can bring four more of these, if, if we had the space. But, um, I have a lot of questions, or some questions, mainly around the services. So the integrated health services, um, it's all in-house, right? Are there any services you contract?
It would vary, I think, for, for the community. I mean, residents could, if they want to go to see a different, you know, offsite provider, they are able to do that. Um, but there would be instances where we might partner with, um, an outside provider or for in-home healthcare, different, different, um, services. But as far as like the Erickson Health Medical Group, that would be in-service or in-house.
How many CCRCs are in the area, so our surrounding neighbors? Um, do you have an idea of what that looks like right now?
Yeah, we did do a little bit of, we did, we have done like market research, obviously. I think there are a couple of CCRCs. We are an entrance deposit model, so, um, we would differ from perhaps like a rental CCRC. Um, so basically, in an entrance deposit model, the resident would, um, we talked about when a resident, you know, when a senior sells their home, then they would use basically the equity as the entrance deposit, a highly refundable entrance deposit for the time that they reside in the care, in the community, which is basically for life. Um, and then they would have a monthly service fee. So there's, I, I would have to go back and look at that information, but I think there may be like one or two CCRCs that are an entrance deposit model, and then there would probably be some other CCRCs that are rental.
On that point, what would be the average cost to a resident? So looking at Douglas, what, what kind of numbers are we looking at here?
It, it varies, as far as the entrance deposit, you mean, or for, um, the monthly service?
Total, total cost to our, to our resident, what would they be paying?
It, it varies depending on the community, and we would not set that until the community was, you know, down the road. But I will say that we, we tend to set the pricing based on the median value of homes in the area, the median sales price. And I think if you look at, um, if you go on the Erickson website and look at our twenty-two communities, that information is available, all of the pricing for the entrance deposit, all of the pricing for the monthly service fees is available. But I will tell you that it varies greatly, like from depending. Um, do you have the Douglas County?
Two hundred and seventy-five thousand, um, for the entrance deposit on the low end, up to a million. And we have a variety of square footage, everywhere from about eight hundred square feet on that low end of the entrance deposit, all the way up to two thousand square feet. So it really allows us to bridge a broad, um, segment of the senior population. And then the monthly service package is roughly around twenty-six hundred dollars a month on the low end, on up to about thirty-four hundred dollars. If you have a second person in the apartment, it's an additional thousand dollars. And when we compare to some other rental models or, um, other communities, we tend to be, um, sort of mid to lower cost for individuals, so. And then Covenant Village in Westminster is a CCRC, Fraser Meadows are the only two in the north.
Where is Fraser Meadows?
Um, Boulder.
So you said you have, uh, three hundred healthcare beds?
That's proposed, conceptually at this time, yeah.
Proposed, yes, yes.
Can you talk more about the specificity of that number? So how, how did, did you formulate that?
It's typically around twenty percent of the independent living unit. So if we have fifteen hundred independent living units, then about twenty percent of that would be for healthcare. And then a portion of that would be between the assisted living and memory care. And then, like, a smaller portion of it would be for the skilled nursing.
And when you talk about memory care versus the other services, do you have data on proportion-wise, how much of a city's population, for example, falls within each category?
As far as, like, within an Erickson community?
So looking at this, this proposal, the three hundred, yep. Do we have an idea as to how much, so if we, if, if you're fully stocked with residents, how many would fit in which?
Mm-hmm. We have some ratios, I could ask Kathy if, I'm sorry, keep going Kathy, but she, this is just the real world, like, real life example. Yeah, come on down. We have, um, again, twenty-two communities that vary in size, so, but since we have.
So we, um, so with fifteen hundred, um, apartments on this campus, uh, some of those will have couples, so we'd anticipate probably about two thousand, twenty-one hundred residents in total. And then we take a look at the number of individuals who potentially would ever need skilled nursing or assisted living in our community, and that's kind of where we come up with the three hundred apartments. And that typically, um, gosh, I should know the ratios. I know who has it, Greg Cologne, um, in our home office has it. But, um, anyway, we can get that information for you. But, but it's typically a smaller number of the healthcare beds because individuals, Mary Anne talked about, people live with us about eleven years, um, on average, when they move into our community. And that is probably triple the amount of a typical retirement community um, uh, in the years that they live with us, so.
Wow.
Yeah, because of the lifestyle, there are so many things that people get involved in. The socialization in our communities is huge.
And looking at a Douglas, for example, in, in Douglas County, how, how, so if we open this up in Westminster, I imagine a lot of it would be non-Westminster residents who would come and live there. Do we have an idea as to how many, or to rephrase it, is there a way to target Westminster seniors? Or prioritize Westminster seniors?
Absolutely, we would do that through our marketing efforts in the community, for sure. Um, and I would say that people move in from within a ten to fifteen mile radius, so we are going to pull in from Burnfield and other surrounding communities. Um, but absolutely, we would target Westminster, and there would be a draw um, right here in the community, just because of the proximity.
And Kathy's a Burnfield resident, by the way.
I am a Burnfield resident, yeah.
And Margaret, I think you said the most profound thing, which is, uh, an asset like this in a city is really efficient, right? Because if we do prioritize Westminster residents, imagine the housing that opens up. We have a housing crisis after, right? That actually helps so many different other crises that are.
Yeah, Counselor, and I'll just say, we didn't add all the things, I mean, there traditionally Erickson uses a shuttle service, right? They have a shuttle on-site, so if you think of the promenade or the transit opportunities, the shopping opportunities, there's so much more to the enhancement of that. You asked about healthcare earlier, the adjoining, um, uh, health facility, right? There's so many more opportunities to expand that. So you're right, we think we will get so many Westminster residents and really enrich the community that way from a market.
And last question, I promise, I'm sorry. Um, outdoor guided activities, I assume are part of the services?
Absolutely.
There's like a hiking club. And honestly, the residents who arrive in the community will create these things. We have an active hiking club on campus, a pickleball club. We have a group that is planning outdoor concerts in the outdoor amphitheater that we have. Um, so the residents are really the ones who create those experiences.
So I would be interested.
And will encourage that.
Yeah, so I, I'd be interested in learning more about the pricing and how you're going to make it affordable for the most amount of people? But, but, but also the outdoors, so the improvements that you're going to make to the surrounding bubble, right? I think that's going to be key as well, but thank you.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Carmelia.
Yes, uh, thank you for the presentation. I want to echo the sentiment about how very dire the need is for senior assisted living in this area. Uh, so I'm really excited. Um, I want to go back again to transit. I think that a big attraction, um, for, from what I've heard, is independence um, of individuals living in facilities like this. So how is it expected that they get around within the facility? Because what I saw looks very car-centric, and so I'd like to expand on how you see them getting around.
We, we have a shuttle service on campus that will go from neighborhood to neighborhood, usually not building to building, but, uh, clubhouse to clubhouse. And then we also will build, um, indoor, uh, walkways that connect every single building. So it really promotes mobility in the community. So in the, that's part of why people live with us for at least eleven years or longer, so.
I'll give a thought from a facility that I've seen, been in, is, uh, they used golf court carts. The residents themselves purchased golf carts. And they would be able to go to the dining facility or, you know, bingo or wherever. And so I just want to make sure that there's ways that the residents have mobility without having to have a car.
Terrific.
Yeah, and I would just say that, uh, like, if you look at the plan and the way the buildings are configured, all of that is driven by walking distances. That is like our main primary driver when we design the buildings themselves to make sure that no resident ever has to walk more than seven hundred and fifty steps to reach some kind of community space, whether, you know, be the dining or some of the, the other amenities, so. Because again, they, our residents are like in their eighties, so it's always like the number one, number one consideration.
Many of them may no longer be driving, right? So how do they get to the shuttle, how do they get? And I assume that the sidewalks and curbs and all that are all connected with, you know.
Yes, and we, we look very closely at how we place the furniture so that, you know, again, they're not having to walk far to be on outdoor, you know, outdoor furniture, anything like that. Thank you.
Senator.
Um, so I, you know, senior housing is definitely needed. However, I don't know any seniors personally that would be able to afford something like this. Um, so, uh, I think my overall interest is if we're adding a lot of density on this site, a lot of residential use that we had not formally contemplated, you know, how can we look at this project as a model of partnership for the community? Um, there's a couple of things where I feel like, because of the cost and the difficulty in being able to get into a model like this for a lot of people, particularly in Westminster. Um, you know, are there opportunities to integrate some affordable options? Um, doesn't have to be a huge amount, but can you look at a component that does have an entry level that would actually, basically, everybody south of the site, uh, I would say would be challenged to be, um, affording something like this? Are there rental models or, or some aspect where there's some flexibility in the structure? I don't know, I'm just laying that out. Um, the other partnership component could be around transit. So when I'm thinking about this many people and elderly that don't, a lot of them are not going to drive, you have this onsite shuttle, we also have a need for, um, maybe, you know, for instance, we have to fund, help fund via transit, for example, for the whole city. And it's focused on elderly and disabled and bringing them an opportunity to get to places where they need to be with this much density of, um, that population. You know, is there some partnership that can be had to help fund something like via transit? Um, to, to help serve the residents that are here to get to, in the transit, to get to the amenities that are up in the Westminster Promenade area, to the city park. You know, this, again, I'll, I'll state that this project is rather insular, both, um, financially and it's designed in a way where it's just all very, you know, the parking lots are all around. You talk about the open space, um, being right next to it, but there's really just parking lots up against it. Um, so it's kind of this little community that's hard to get to, it's hard to see through. Um, you know, I, I would say it's almost like the solid mass, the way it's currently designed. And there are such great opportunities for view corridors that could occur if you design this into a more of a gridded, um, development where you're lining up opportunities not only for the neighborhood and way for, eh, the, the park space to the east, but, um, just for more porosity for the site and a more welcoming, um, uh, countenance within the, within the city. It's, it, right now, doesn't seem like it belongs to Westminster yet and is yet reacting to and really engaged with the city. Um, uh, another, let's see, let me just. Um, another question I have is potentially understanding where the closest underpass is. I don't know where we have that in the city, looking at Tomas.
From a trail.
Cause I know we have some great park spaces, but how easy are they if we have people who really want to hike or bike?
So there's two, Sarah, there's one under a hundred and fourth, um, there's two underpasses um, where you can tuck down and around here, and then there's another one at Big Dry Creek, and then an underpass underneath Westminster Boulevard on the west side that goes also underneath US thirty-six, too. So there's a lot of a- already awesome infrastructure that's hopefully we're going to be able to tie into.
That's great, I'm glad that that's already there. Um, the, uh, so a couple of questions that I would have in addition to how can this community partner with the city is, um, I think more to Counselor Demont's question, you know, uh, questions when this comes up is the, for the twenty-one hundred people that are onsite, you know, how does that relate to, that population relate to the open space dedication? Um, and then, kind of touched on it a little bit, but I'd be really curious to know how this relates fiscally to, um, the employment use that is proposed and this use, because it's sort of this. and this use, cause it's sort of this modified employment residential thing. And I'm just really interested to know what that fiscal impact would be. We talked about, I it wasn't quite as it's close, it's close.
No, councillor, I just say, I mean, first to your first comments about uh, kinda design elements, and they're much more than that. Um, we think those are all great opportunities. We we actually completely concur. This was an initial um, what this opportunity now with a concept review is to kinda show it, right? In in a lot of ways, a lot of times you'd see it two years down the road, we're probably too far, right? So we couldn't agree more that there's great opportunities for porosity, for view corridors, for planning from a neighborhood perspective, whether it be Waverly Acres, Sephora Gardens, as you know, now wraps around it to the north and to the east of that neighborhood. There's some real opportunities. There's also incredible trail opportunities, right? A new trail right there that goes to the rec center. But somehow Highland and Big Dry Creek don't connect there except at the sidewalk, right? So to bring trails, to bring trails through our site, so we really look at that. So we we owe you that, right? We have to come back on that. I will say the partnerships, we think this has a very unique opportunity to address economic development, job growth and job retention and job creation and provide housing. And that is such a rare thing to do. So we are doing an economic impact study. We're actually gonna have a third party do that as well. So you all can see those numbers. So you can compare it to like a reef, uh, kind of an employment flex to really look at that use, right? But from an economic engine, we can't imagine a better transit, people, kind of culture oriented development that also brings that economic impact. So we're gonna have that as part of our economic plan. But we think, again, seven hundred plus jobs, annual property and all of that. The last thing I'll say, and I'm sorry, just to kinda put this out there, is we're really proud of that ownership model. We get so much pressure for always having multifamily for rent. So I appreciate your comment about people being able to afford this, but it is an ownership model, meaning I maybe sell my home and move in there. So you think of medium home prices now are well north of five hundred thousand dollars. That is usually something that then somebody moves into this facility. So I'm not questioning your comment at all. I'm saying that we really look at this as an opportunity to have ownership and actual investment in the community and allow that to happen as well. So we'll come back with those price points, but we completely concur about insular and how do we connect it and really integrate it to the community.
And I would just um, thank you for all of that. And I would just underline, um, this project will create a you know, transit need for the community, and so I would definitely look at.
We need to make sure many of our employees can get there as well, too.
That last mile.
Your shuttle was a great idea. That's terrific, yeah.
Um, yeah, I so I'm very excited about this. This is very needed, but um, I I'm very concerned about the cost. Um, I I really feel like you're leaving a demographic of people out, especially when you um, are integrating memory care, which I'm I'm very excited about. Um, you have to be really careful because I've worked with folks, it's very, very hard. Um, when somebody at their end of life is in memory care and they have to move because of cost. And and that 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 happens. And and so um, I wanna know what what you do, what you can possibly do to um, mitigate that, but um, personally, my husband is twenty-five years older than I am. So if it ever got to a point where he needed care outside of our home, this is not a model that we could take advantage of. Um, and I would want to because it's close to where we live. But I could not sell my home to then um, get him this help. I I I'm, I guess for as excited as I am, and I definitely see the benefit of a campus style, especially with it being um, you know, older people. I I just wonder, you know, how many, it it seems like the only people who could afford to do this are people who are already financially well off. And um, everybody ages, no matter what their socioeconomic status is. And so what do we do, what do we do for that? Uh, the prices, that that's like the more than some mortgages here um, per month. And then and then I also don't understand usually units, um, the cost has to do with square foot, the square footage of a unit. But if there's another adult living there, another senior, uh, say it's a couple, then it's a thousand dollars more a month. Can you explain why it goes up that much?
Go right ahead.
Yeah, so let me start first with, we have a home for life commitment. So the entrance deposit that individuals commit to on the front end. Um, the contract, I'm not sure how it will be structured for this site. Currently, in our site at Windcrest, it's a ninety percent refundable. So they get ninety percent of their entrance deposit back when they vacate the apartment. Along the way, if they have an increase in care where it is more than what their income is, they can access that entrance deposit to help support or pay for that higher need care. And so um, it it's really almost like an insurance model that's built in to the the price, the pricing. And then um, the monthly service package that you pay stays the same if you're an independent living. You might have an increase when you go to continuing care. Um, you pay for the services that you need when you need them. And so it's not something that you pay for automatically from the moment that you move in. So we have individuals who are retired firefighters, school teachers, individuals who never thought that they could consider living in one of our communities, who have been able to afford it, mostly because they do sell their home. But they leverage that to do the investment with the entrance deposit. And then again, if their income isn't there to meet that monthly expense, they can tap into that entrance deposit. Residents do a fundraiser as well, um, called the Resident Care Fund. So we never want anyone to leave one of our communities because of financial need. And so if an individual gets to that place, they've moved through all of their assets, they've moved through their entrance deposit, then they can tap into uh, the Resident Care Fund. And that becomes the supplement uh, to their income on a monthly basis. So there are lots of income safeguards. It's part of our business model and structure. And then um, partnering, you mentioned several times the, you know, partnering. We do that a lot at Windcrest. We can't be successful if we don't partner with a lot of entities. Um, from uh, South Metro Fire to um, the all the hospital systems. We would work with all of those entities, including uh, transportation to see what the need would be in our community and determine what what does that intersection look like? What are the partnership opportunities that we need to consider? And we'd look at all of that as well. So I don't know if I helped with.
A little bit. Um, how often does somebody have to leave because they can no longer afford it?
Um, we have never had anyone leave Windcrest in our sixteen years, and we've only had, I don't think there's ever been anyone in.
Unless they want to leave, yeah.
Right.
Well, no, it's not that they would want to leave.
Yeah.
There have been situations where people are forced to leave because they can no longer afford it, and their family cannot afford the monthly payment. And they're in memory care. And it's a it's a it's.
The only time it has happened is is if they stop paying their bill and they don't access the entrance deposit. They don't work with us to make sure that they are able to find that financial opportunity to stay.
And how often does that happen?
It, um, I, maybe once I've had that happen in the eleven years that I've been at Windcrest.
So councillor, I'll just say, like, I understand um, kinda the im- implication of that and what the model should be, right? So I'll just say, and I'm I'm certainly not the expert, that we're designing it around the exact question that is being brought up, that you're bringing up, right? We don't want somebody to transition to a higher level of care and not be able to pay for it. So the way that ownership model, it's really structured that way, that then they can go and tap into that if they need that additional care. We don't know who'll need that. I think the other thing, I just wanna be sure, um, to your question about just the different models, right? There's a one bedroom, a two bedroom and a two and a half bedroom that really could meet kind of any individual or family where they're at. So you structure it that way. You can change size of unit as well as things evolve over time. So completely fair, your comment about how family structures change over time, and we're kind of si- situated to address that very issue.
Um, we also have seniors in our community that don't own a home.
Sure.
So what, they don't have a home to sell, to get into something like this. Wha- what what do, what options do you have for them?
I I think they would typically maybe go to a like a rental CCRC, or they would tap into other assets they might have to meet the.
And on occasion, families will do a guarantee to cover either the entrance deposit or the monthly service fee. If they really are wanting their mom or dad in our community, we've had that happen as well.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Allen, do you have anything?
I'm just like, um, councillor Demont, it's getting late. I can't even remember names. Anyway, I'm concerned about the density. Um, the residents of our city are tired of all the density we've built over the the past few years. And I really don't think they'll they'll be supportive of the project just because of the density. And that's my concern with it and what it does to our water resources and and, you know, transporting all this stuff. So that's my biggest concern.
We will address that. We are, and we appreciate it very much, um, the comment about the existing comp plan. And if you make a change, you have to do a really an analysis of the change in water use. And we're actually have done initial kind of analysis to show a decrease uh, in the water use that's provided on the site. So uh, councillor will absolutely address those things. We understand that was a value that was talked about uh, throughout that process in the community. And you're right, from a density standpoint, we're just putting out kind of the numbers of the fifteen hundred and three hundred. I think we wanna go shape that with the community, what that final plan is. But I think we wanted to just kinda share generally this type of facility, those are the numbers that are involved.
For me, it's, we talk so much dealing with that comp plan. And and this is the last piece that is critical for several things that we had in mind, which is why it's designated what it's designated. So to go back and change that for me, I'm not there. Um, economic development, work with us, and we know that vision because it is a corridor that has the trails, it has the amenities, it has so many things. It is a hotspot for um, innovation, technology. And we don't have a ton of spots left, as you know, um, for those kinds of things. And this is the corridor that we said is it's for. Um, the height, um, you know, from Uplands, I go to three. Um, affordability, I have that concern. Uh, ev- everybody around here has. I I know, I I know Covenant Village, I know um, all of the places around, which is why I even asked in our housing piece, um, who takes um, Medicaid? Because um, and nobody will tell you, so that was my answer. So um, that concerns me because I agree, councillor Hot, that south of this complex, down to um, our borders on the southern part of historic Westminster, people could never afford this. And um, yet they want to stay in Westminster, they want to live here, and they wanna stay put. So anyway, all of those things racing through my mind. You had a ton of things that I agree with, and I know councillor Demont wants to say so.
Well, I'm just curious, so I think in my experience, and this is personal experience, when you look at things like memory care and senior housing, I I think there's often sticker shock. So trying to put it into context, as I've listened to this conversation, I'm curious about a couple of things. Because I know one of the things that's difficult with senior living is we do need it across the board, and some of it's gonna be more expensive. And I know that we've approved some that frankly, some people aren't gonna be able to afford to live in. Um, you know, but when you look at qualifying for those areas, like you brought up, uh, retired first responders, my dad's retired Denver police officer. There's a lot of those ones that he wouldn't qualify to be in, but he, at some point, maybe that's something he's gonna, you know, look into. Or maybe he stays in his home, but being, point being, is having those different options is important to me as we build out, you know, different senior options. Because um, we can't just address it for low income. Yes, we want to address it for low income, but we don't wanna all, so address it for people who frankly, you know, have a position in life where they still might need that care, but they have the money to pay for it. Um, but with that being said, can you tell me kinda where does this range in in memory care and housing? Because I I, you know, I know that it's expensive period. So, you know, where are you in the realm of, like, I know we have other memory care facilities in the city? So did you have an idea where, and I think you answered this earlier on, that you were kinda in that low to middle range? And my, did I hear right? And would that be the right way to look at it?
And for the pricing in our continuing care, we really look to the external market and make sure that our pricing is um, reasonable or comparable. Uh, sometimes it's less, sometimes it's a little more. But because of our business model, again, when individuals qualify, they can access the asset that they've leveraged to pay for that higher care.
And so if I understand right, the the concept or in your other facilities, there is a more broader spectrum across the the living uh, campus than there might be in some of the smaller campuses that you know, more cater to, you know, one demographic or one general senior need than another. Is that fair to say?
Yes. And when you move into independent living, the first step that we take is additional services. If those additional services or a little bit of housekeeping, we'll add that piece and you pay for only that. If you need home support services or home health in the home, then maybe we'll add an element of that. And keep the cost at a reasonable rate. When you get to a certain number of hours in home health, then it makes more sense to be in continuing care.
That that's good to know. I mean, I know.
It's incremental.
Yeah, like my grandmother, when she went to senior living, she bounced around to multiple places because as she aged, she needed different care. So she ended up in different parts of town because there wasn't, you know, the the where she was at originally couldn't handle care, so I think that that's a nice component.
So we certainly owe you all a lot on the pricing and kinda differentiation of that. I'll make a simple point, and you all have been so fair about this discussion, is that from a demand, which drives up costs more than anything, we're talking about bringing eighteen hundred units that aren't there today, right? So to find that equivalent senior housing, we don't have it, right? So it costs a lot more than that. And I also would say, the migration again to focus on if it is sixty percent of residents or area residents, right? That means the housing stock in our neighborhoods is turning over as well, right? So not everyone's gonna live in this facility, not everyone wants to live in a four rent model, but we really think we'll show some matrixes on how that kinda impacts that. So we understand we'll come back with more information on that for sure.
One, one last thing, when when you bring back the water analysis, can you also show the efficiency per unit? Because so quite often, there's a misconception um, that higher density means use more water relative to single family. But often what happens is with single family, have these big lots, you use a lot of water. And the per unit for many multifamilies are actually using less water, if you look at it from that. So just be thorough in the analysis.
We'll do that. And the corollary, it's also the lowest traffic of any housing typology is senior housing as well. So not only water efficiency and sustainability, but traffic generation as well. So we'll focus on those differentiations.
I see no other questions?
Great. Thank you for all the time, yes.
As stated at the outset of the concept plan review, couns- council comments are gratuitous and do not bind or obligate the applicant, city staff, planning commissioner, city council to any course of action or future decision. I would suggest we take a break.
It's good. I just want to have PT throw something at you.
Okay, we are ready for the third concept plan review tonight for the following development proposal, the property located at 7041 Utica Street. This is a concept plan review, is not a hearing on development application. Its purpose is to allow city council to learn about a proposed project in its beginning stages and provide feedback to the applicant on city council's general impressions of the proposal. In accordance with Westminster Municipal Code, concept plan reviews occur after city staff complete the pre-application review for a proposed project but before staff perform a technical review of the project. Technical review, which involves an official application for ODP, PDP, or amendment thereto, will occur only after the applicant chooses to move a project forward after its concept plan review. As part of our review process tonight, city staff will provide a brief introduction, then the applicant or its representative will present an overview of the applicant's development proposal. City council may then ask questions of the applicant and provide the applicant feedback. City council comments on the proposal are gratuitous in nature and are not binding on city council, the planning commission, city staff, or the applicant. Welcome again.
Thank you again, Mayor. John McConnell, interim planning manager here again to introduce the concept plan for 7041 Utica Street. The project site is located on the west side of Utica Street between West Seventy Fifth Avenue and West Seventy Second Avenue. The proposed concept includes the development of six three-story townhomes accessed from Utica Street. Units will be oriented with front doors facing north towards the north side lot line with garages facing south toward a shared internal drive and south side lot line. The approximately .36 to .37 acre lot was previously occupied by a single-family home, which is demolished sometime in summer of 2023. The zoning map is illustrated on the left side of this slide, and the comp plan map is illustrated on the right side of this slide. 7041 Utica Street is currently zoned R3 and is designated residential low-density in the comprehensive plan. The current comp plan designation allows single-family detached and paired homes or duplexes at a density of 3.5 dwelling units per acre. The current comp plan designation would allow one dwelling unit on this subject property. In order for six townhome units to be developed as proposed, the designation would need to be amended to suburban multifamily, which allows up to 18 dwelling units per acre. Notice was provided for this concept plan review. The applicant posted one sign on the property and mailed over a thousand notice letters. The notice was also posted in the Westminster window, and all required notifications took place on or before December 1st. For the applicant to pursue the proposed development, they would need to seek approval of a comprehensive plan amendment, changing the land use designation from residential low-density to suburban multifamily. The comprehensive plan denotes specific locational criteria for suburban multifamily, including location along arterial streets, adjacency to transit, and proximity to activity centers, along with other development characteristics. Any change in the comprehensive plan designations may impact utility, transportation, or supplies of something. The property would also be required to be rezoned from R3 to plan unit development, and a PDP and ODP would need to be approved. An additional detail is provided in your agenda memo. And this concludes the staff's presentation, and the applicant is here to provide you with their presentation at this time.
Thank you all. Thanks, John. I appreciate being here very much. My name's Andrew Baker. I'm a senior planner with Baseline Engineering. I am filling in for my colleague Tez Hawkins tonight. He and I are the senior planners with Baseline. Unfortunately, he was unable to attend, but this project in this city is very near and dear to my heart. I did grow up here. I went to Stanley Lake High School. I caught grasshoppers in the open fields of both projects that we heard tonight. So it's very exciting for me to be here and be a part of the conscious and proactive development of this city. The concept plan that we will be discussing tonight is fairly straightforward. I think John did a fairly good job of explaining that. I will run through these and try to be fairly concise. I will do my best to refer to Westminster High School as its proper name and not Westy, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. So just to kind of reiterate, this is a concept proposal. We understand that there would be a comprehensive plan amendment that would be required as part of the first official submittal to the city, as well as a PDP to go through the planned unit development process. Located south of Seventy Second Avenue and just west of Lowell, we are just northwest of Westminster High School, as well as Hidden Lake, and this is an existing neighborhood that has a pretty diverse mix of housing. We have some single-family detached, there are single-family attached, as well as some multifamily that is spread around that. As shown in the zoning map that we looked at earlier, the property is currently zoned R3, as much of the surrounding, though we do have some higher-density R4 mixed in there as well. The comprehensive plan amendment that we have been discussing has taken, you know, a bit of an iterative process. As we started discussing the proposal with planning staff during the pre-application meeting, we started looking at the comprehensive plan policies and some of the goals that were in place to ensure that what we had in mind for the six townhome units would meet the intent of the comprehensive plan, as well as being compatible with the block itself, and then from a kind of a larger regional basis. So we will be looking at that comprehensive plan amendment and going through the subsequent PDP, and then ODP and final plating processes, based on the feedback that we can hear from you all tonight. The rezone to planned unit development is going to be doing our best to meet most of the existing regulations that are found in the R4 zone district. We will also be holding to the multifamily residential design standards to the highest degree possible. The chart that you see there on the left is just showing some of the kind of bulk standard requirements, as well as landscaping for the current Westminster Code of multifamily developments. We have building heights at a maximum of 35 feet, front setbacks of 50, side and rear at 4, and then a landscaped area of 40%. We did take a look at the surrounding properties and created a range just based on that contextual compatibility, and, you know, once again, we wanted the PUD to be compatible on kind of like a house-by-house basis as you are looking at the structures, whether it is a single-family home or more multifamily. We know that through certain bulk standards and residential design compatibility, that we can create something that still fits into the existing environment. And so our proposed development on the right side there does the best to kind of join those two together, once again, propose something that shouldn't be too out of character as far as form and height go, just with the existing Westminster Code. If it ain't broke, don't fix it. We would rather not rewrite the code if possible, and found that our proposal, it really does fit the existing context fairly well. The site plan that we have proposed here is fairly simple at this point. Once again, we are very early in the conceptual planning stages. I know that some of this would have been in your packets, and, you know, some of the conceptual architecture that we had proposed at the pre-app is something that continues to change as well, and so I have some more slides in here, I believe the next one, that will be a bit more of an updated look at what you may have seen. But essentially, we would have one private drive that would be accessed off of Utica. Those would provide access to garage spaces on the ground floor, each providing two parking spaces for each unit. There would be a sidewalk that would be connecting around to the north side of the property, where the front doors of those homes would actually be. So we have the pedestrian access going around to the front, though we would pay extra attention to the eastern facade that would actually be facing the street, and that's where a lot of the kind of architectural design components that we would write into our PUD would be making sure that those are, once again, contextually compatible with the rest of the block. So here's a picture of a few projects that we see kind of fitting in. Once again, you know, we would look at roof lines and make sure that those are, you know, compatible with that block context, using things like building materials, placement of windows. As you can see, you know, a lot of these units are actually accessed off of, I'll call it the long side, but still from the front, look very similar to some of the single-family or duplex homes that would be there as well. We understand that there would need to be some water quality aspects that we would need to be added. So the box that you see in the upper right corner of the plan, which would be the northeast corner of the property, we would be installing a rain garden, once again, just trying to mitigate some of those impacts of impervious area, provide additional landscaping, and, you know, we are an engineering firm, but all of us planners make sure that our engineers are still making it aesthetically pleasing, and we see that as, you know, an innovative way to deal with both water quality and detention on a small, in-scale project like The comprehensive plan amendment, which we would absolutely love to hear any comments that you all have on the kind of finer details of our actual design, the setbacks and how that is compatible, but the density is, you know, always going to come up, and we understand that, I'm sure you all did quite a lot of work updating that comprehensive plan just a little less than a year ago. That low-density residential, I believe, had a maximum density of four to eight dwelling units per acre. You may have seen in some of our early application materials with the pre-app that, in order to increase that, we had looked at the residential medium density, which still just has a maximum of 12 dwelling units per acre. We're finding that, based on the six units that we're proposing, we need closer to 16, which falls in line with that suburban multifamily category, which John had described. In reviewing that, that seems to work perfectly for our proposal. Contextually, we have several other properties on that block, and then really the whole neighborhood that is immediately adjacent to the east has that same suburban multifamily designation. So that is what we would be moving forward with in our application moving forward. And as I said, we did take a close look at that comprehensive plan and make sure that, you know, regardless of, you know, density requirements or zoning requirements, or any conflicts that those come up with, that at a face value, our proposal does meet all of those goals and policies that are listed on the right-hand side. Really, the heart and soul of this project is the same idea that we've been hearing all night, which is that housing is a crisis, it is necessary. We saw examples of more some non-traditional housing that is extremely important, not only to open up stock, but as we all know, greenfield development is very expensive and can be very costly, you know, not just for developer, but also for the city serving those. So we feel very strongly that infill development, redevelopment is another tool for providing that missing middle housing that we all know that we desperately need. So once again, we've listed here a few of the amenities that are within walking distance, all of these within a mile, just a little bit more than a mile in some of them, but there's just, it's incredible access to anything, really. You have commercial shopping centers in a half a mile, Hidden Lake Park, several others that are within that mile. We have access to Hidden Lake and Dry Creek Trails, having Westminster High School right next door. My mother is a teacher and has worked at Pomona for 15 years, and this is something that we see over and over, is that new teachers have a hard time moving into a district because, once again, this missing middle housing, buying a new single-family home is just preventative to some of those folks. So we, you know, this part of town I see as a great opportunity to be able to provide, once again, some of that missing middle housing, making that more attainable for the folks who want to live here and access all of this, you know, wonderful development that you've all created. The forthcoming PDP, ODP, and final plat will be submitted after we hear from you all here. Go back to the drawing board. Obviously, the architectural and engineering items would be much more closely looked at. We had talked about water supply as being one of those, especially for a comprehensive plan amendment that would need to be analyzed, and then the PDP would have much more specific requirements around architecture, and picking out, once again, some of those contextually significant items that we see from that block and that neighborhood, and would be very specifically prescribed because, you know, again, with infill development, the devil can be in the details, and we want to make sure that the, you know, form follows function and not the other way around. Along with that, the final plat would eventually subdivide these into condominiums, condominium condominiums, condominiumize the townhomes that are on there, so these would be for sale, and then there is easement dedication as well for access and utilities. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to hear any questions that you may have.
Mayor Potem.
Well, based on what you've shown us, I'm a little disturbed to know you own more on the street. I'd prefer for you to be looking at a more of a bungalow-style, the bungalow court-style development versus throwing townhomes facing onto a fence with no, I mean, what you're showing is, in the graphics, where for architecture, all of those examples are all townhomes facing onto a street. So you're talking about density, you're talking about graceful infill, but what you're proposing is not that. And for this area, the scale, you were talking about one store, a lot of one-story homes. Yes, there's a little bit of multifamily mixed in, but this is out of scale, it's crammed in there. It looks like, you know, those ugly Denver townhomes that are being crammed onto these tiny sites. It's not respectful of the surrounding area, and so if we're going to densify, we really do need to be densifying in a way where it is respectful of people who are going to be living there. I mean, if this is supposed, you know, yes, these will be more attainable for folks, but let's not cram them into facing 10 feet away from a fence, and having no access to a street, no access to open space or any type of, you know, typical lot. So I think you're trying to do too much on this site, and if you have other sites that are bigger, you could look at, you know, more of a bungalow-style development where the homes are facing onto some type of common area or open space, it's more livable. I don't think you would want to go live in a unit like that or purchase that. Think about what would you go into? Design respectfully for what people would want to go live in. Design a place like that. And so that's all I, I mean, I'm worried about the scale with the neighboring residences. You're talking about three stories, and they're very close to the property line, and I just, yeah, I mean, that's the main, that's my main concern. I think the density is a little, I know it's mixed in that area, but this is not a prototype that I want to see in our neighborhoods, wherever, you know. I'm fine with us densifying some areas because, yes, we do need some opportunities for more attainable housing, and these are, a lot of these sites are a little bit larger, but not to this manner. So that's my comment. I would probably try and reduce the number of units on the site so that you have more opportunity for a central open space, and ideally to maximize the number of units that would face onto Utica.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you.
I was thinking the same thing, that was just way too dense, maybe a duplex or duplexes or something. I just think it's way too dense for the site. And the alley is probably another, isn't an alley behind it that you have to care for, the six units?
Yeah, that's a good question.
It's when the concrete breaks, they all have to chip in and replace it. It's a problem.
Councilor Demat?
I didn't share any of those concerns. My big concern is honestly is water, so understanding that you're going to do something more dense, there's probably less landscape and stuff, so, you know, I don't know if you know now, but if you brought something like this forward, that would be my question, what's the trade-off in the comprehensive land use? And if you listened to the earlier session, that's, you know, going to be the case for me with any kind of change to the comp plan, or is it a one-for-one as far as water usage?
Yep, understood.
Councilor Sadi?
Thank you, Mayor. I share Mayor Potem's concerns. I think that was very prudent, that it's facing, who would, so we do need missing middle, right? We need workforce housing, but not at the cost of making these homes feel different than other homes, just because it's more attainable. I think that's definitely something you should read design.
And I, you know, absolutely welcome these comments. I mean, you know, urban design, and as I mentioned, I understand that the devil is in the details of these projects. I would love to learn more about what you feel is a respectful design, and for us, when you look at like the contextual setbacks of what is allowed in the R3 zone, a structure that looks like this and could face the sidewalk, have essentially the exact same impact as you're driving down the street, could be constructed, right? And so like, what we're trying to do is figure out what are those aspects that you find to be incompatible, right? You know, because if, driving down the street, if the gable is the same and the materials are the same, and there could even be a front door situation, as you can see on some of these, they're not necessarily all fronting a road, right? And so, you know, again, just any input, any feedback is very appreciated.
I can get your card and send you a book to read.
I would appreciate it very much. But I mean, I just want to reiterate that, you know, the height meets the existing context of what is allowable per the zone district. The front setback was reduced, but, you know, there weren't really any other bulk standards that we felt were outside of what, you know, the residential design standards and zoning standards that are already in place. And we're happy to go back to the drawing board, but I'm just trying to do my best to fill up my notebook here.
For me, the height isn't compatible with what's directly surrounding it. I see that house next door, and they're going to be engulfed by three stories. I don't like how it's situated either. It just looks, I don't know, it just doesn't look correct, and I just don't like it.
Other comments? Okay. As stated at the outset of this concept plan review, councilor comments are gratuitous and do not bind or obligate the applicant, city staff, the planning commission, or city council to any course of action or future decision.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to the Unified Development Code.
Okay, Mr. McConnell, you're back in the hot seat.
Thank you again. John McConnell here again, interim planning manager, and I'll provide you with the Unified Development Code presentation, and have with me Andrew Spurgeon, principal planner long-range. Andrew will be here to help with the questions that you may have on this subject. And so, that said, I'll go ahead and start the presentation. So a little bit of background here. The existing Westminster Municipal Code Title XI, and that's what we refer to as our current development code or the current code, was adopted on August 11, 1997. It represented the culmination of work that began in 1988 to balance concerns from residents in the development community over the city's procedures, standards, and organization of regulatory provisions. Since the 1997 adoption, code has been amended in response to city council priorities, for example, changes to public hearing notification, requirement signed regulations, and the recently enacted concept review process. There's not been a comprehensive review of the larger organization and structure of the code since 1997, however. So Phase 1 work of the UDC, the Unified Development Code, was completed in 2018, and this removed the service commitment competition that some of you may be familiar with, and established mandatory minimum standards for residential development, and a new requirement where only city council can approve exceptions to those minimum standards. Staff is also aware, however, that in some cases, the exception process has caused some frustration from developers about the necessity of this step in lieu of just a modernized set of development standards. So of note, the recent introduction of the concept plan review process has helped city staff, developers, residents, and city council better understand project benefits and/or impacts at an early stage. So Phase 2 work of the UDC entailed extensive community engagement in 2018 and 2019, and in coordination with the comprehensive plan, and resulted in an initial 543-page draft UDC presented in 2021 that eventually grew to 710 pages, once additional unchanged Title XI provisions were brought in. So it was a rather large draft that we were originally working on. Review of the draft UDC resulted in concern that it was less intuitive and overly broad and complicated, and hence not really an improvement over the existing code. When the city council chose not to approve an earlier version of the comprehensive plan in 2021- When the city council chose not to approve an earlier version of the comprehensive plan in twenty twenty one, it was decided that further work on the UDC should be limited until city council established new policy direction for the physical growth of the city through the updated comp plan. The UDC will take the policy framework of the recently adopted twenty forty comp plan and translate it into regulations to help implement the plan through future development. The intent of the UDC is to provide the right regulatory tools for the development of the small amount of remaining developable land we have, while also providing a more tailored approach to future infill and redevelopment opportunities. Based on discussions with city council in twenty twenty two, the comprehensive plan shifted in focus to support employment development with an emphasis on opportunities for research and development and life sciences, supporting diversity and in housing formats with an eye towards homeownership and reducing citywide water demand. As an implementation component of the comprehensive plan and the UDC, we'll continue to respond to these three overarching themes as well as policies from the twenty twenty one Sustainability Plan and twenty twenty one Transportation and Mobility Plan. The project scope unifies the WMC Title XI, our landscape regulations, and the six different design standards and guidelines documents into a one stop shop for land development. But staff proposes a more surgical approach than the prior seven hundred and ten page draft. Westminster's remaining land inventory is challenging. Most sites are designated by the comprehensive plan for employment land uses, but we do not currently have design standards for office nor industrial uses. So this is a critical gap that needs to be filled in. We also do not have standards conducive to the type of development on small infill lots that's typical of recent development cases and more in line with Westminster's future growth paradigm. By creating appropriate regulations subject to city council approval, it will be, it will allow greater predictability and transparency for all involved. The scope of work for the UDC includes zoning regulations, site planning rules, architectural design requirements, and associated procedures. Key topics introduced with the twenty forty comprehensive plan that will be incorporated into the UDC include zoning more closely aligned with comprehensive plan designations, strategies to support ownership through smaller format, single family products, townhomes and accessory dwelling units, standards for office and industrial development that are lacking in our current standards, and standards for the public realm to support the city's high quality of life. To keep the UDC focused and manageable for the city's limited remaining land inventory, the UDC will leave in place other development related regulations embedded elsewhere in our code such as alcohol sales, short term rentals, and animal management. Provisions related to dedication of property for public purposes such as public land dedication, school land dedication, and park development fees are also not part of the UDC scope at this time. Most residential communities in Westminster are master planned through individual PUDs. There's no intent to amend the zoning for these existing neighborhoods with this. The UDC would also not apply to downtown Westminster and the Westminster Station since those are regulated by specific plans and regulations that are separate zoning and design standards from the more general citywide standards that would be in the UDC. The primary benefit and or impacts of the UDC will be in the few locations where new development occurs. Less than five percent of the city's land area is vacant developable land. And once sites with active development applications are removed from this list, there remains only about two point eight percent of the city's land area left, and that shown in the attachment two. It is within this two point eight percent, roughly six hundred and twelve acres, where the UDC will primarily be applicable. The UDC may also be applied where redevelopment occurs and where major changing, changes to, to an existing developed property occur. For example, construction of a new building on a portion of a commercial site that's currently a parking lot. The existing WMC provision that requires new development to conform with the comprehensive plan would remain. This is critical due to the water supply planning work associated with that, land uses and densities of the comprehensive plan. Adoption of the comp plan in March of twenty twenty three provided a reset for the project since the UDC will need to align with the policies of the plan to inform the physical development of the city. Prior feedback provided by residents, development stakeholders, and interdepartmental staff has been retained and consulted, and these interest groups will be used to define upcoming participation in the UDC. The UDC will be further informed by current and upcoming strategic focused objectives identified by city council. And these include the redevelopment and adaptive reuse toolkit, which is expected in October, well, which happened in October of this year. The Housing Needs Assessment, which is, is, the initial stages is wrapping up this month. And the Parks, Recreation, and Libraries, the PRL Vision Plan, and that's expected next December. Since the UDC is not a focused objective identified in the current adopted strategic plan, staff will prioritize the Adaptive Reuse Toolkit, Housing Needs Assessment, and PRL Vision Plan and continue the UDC once these focused objectives are a little bit more advanced. Broad public review is expected in mid twenty twenty four, and this includes additional city council briefings, and all with an eye toward completing the UDC in early twenty twenty five. So with that, we're happy to take any questions that you may have.
So with the, I, I'm just overall happy that we're doing this. And I would just hope that for sure we're, we're addressing the standards that we see a need for such as infill development and adaptive reuse. I'm also kinda curious to know how we'll handle, part of this might be in the infill standards, but transitions between uses and or levels of density. So, you know, if that has some level of setbacks or something, if we're putting something that's denser, you know, take for an example, that last concept review, if it's denser, do we have some standards for if it's a significant decrease in density next door, do we do something additional? So those transitions, to take into account. I think the other thing that comes to mind is really just connectivity to surrounding development and to our, and, and relationships with our open space and parks to not just think about the individual site, but how does it relate to? Because so much of our development now is just, it's all relating to something, cause it's all surrounded by existing. So to pay a lot of attention to that. And I think that also plays into lighting as well if we're introducing some density into areas or lack of, if we have an area like a parking lot and it's next to residential, how are we thinking about light and noise impacts and things like that? Definitely scale. I feel like there are some things that, I, I know I just mentioned this, but, you know, you think about the, the, the multifamily next to the West End and how the scale of the, the larger building was kinda pushed back towards the residential where, you know, we could have had a better transition and scale to the neighbors. I'll just emphasize that.
Like I say, everything that you, that you emphasized are going to be priorities, among other things in this. Like I said earlier, we really had to, felt it was important to step back from this big massive code rewrite when it would really only apply to a very small portion of our city. And it really wasn't sensitive to these infill and redevelopment opportunities where those transitions are, are gonna be so critical to get right. So this is our effort, I think, to recalibrate this, incorporate all of the work that's going on now that I mentioned with these other planning processes, align it with the currently adopted comprehensive plan. And so we're, we're really excited and looking forward to sort of retooling the factory to really address this city's future, which is a built out city.
Yeah, that map that you showed with just the little red, it was very, very telling and it just really illustrates what you're addressing. And please also address townhomes lined up on a.
So, so this map really does say a lot. And, and it's noted on here, everything that you see in red represents about five percent of the developable land. But as you can, as you probably recognize, there are some red spots on the map that are entitled and just haven't gone vertical yet, you know, the uplands being one of them, and that's a, that's a lot of acreage there. And so really, when you subtract all of that, we've got around two point eight percent. So it's important to tailor our regulations to make sure that those areas are developed appropriately, but really have a keen eye towards our future, which is infill and redevelopment and those sensitivities, yes.
Councilor Ireland?
Actually, Sarah, and I talked about this, but in Boulder, they make, they're, they're, they make you, when you build something new, not block the sun or the sky view from the other property that's already there. And I'd like to see that adopted in our city, cause I think people need light, you know? They don't need their view and everything else blocked. And I liked what she said about the senior center and how it was blocking people's view and how can we, you know, make it better for those that are already there.
Thank you, Mayor. So I, I was, I read the Housing Needs Assessment draft, that's what I do for fun. And one of the proposals that will be coming, so after it gets through the community, it's gonna come to us at some point. But one of the proposals is related to ADUs. I know this is near and dear to Mayor Protem, but I would love to see this reform of our UDC regarding how we treat ADUs and really focus on that. I'm curious what that will look like and very interested to see that.
We are interested in taking a deeper dive on that. The comprehensive plan that was recently adopted gave us the green light. In other words, the comp plan supports ADUs. Some of the challenges that, that come with ADUs are the cost. Also, we do have a lot of covenant controlled communities. We do have a lot of PUDs out there that don't necessarily allow ADUs right now. So there's a lot of, I guess, added complexity in Westminster when it comes to, to creating a system that allows those things. But staff is fully supportive of that, and that's the direction we have in the comprehensive plan. It's a little early in the research to be able to confirm that adding ADUs to our, our housing supply is gonna make a meaningful impact in the housing crisis. An ADU is a second home. Not a lot of people can, can build a second home. So it's, it's gonna be challenging, but I, but I think it's definitely the direction that we're, that we're heading in. I just, I hope we do see some built. Other communities are not really showing us that, that a lot's getting built out there, so.
In other, in some communities, they, it's not all over the city. It's only in certain parts. And there's reasons for that, bigger lots, those kinds of things. And then they have the requirements that the owner either lives in the ADU or lives in the original home, but they have to be on site.
I, I would just add that this could be something that the state develops. And so we should, we should definitely plan and be ready for that, even in areas that are, that do have PUDs. I don't know what, you know, what kinds, I had to look at Dave to see, you know, I, I don't know what they could do, but I, I would just be thoughtful about, you know, understanding if a, if it's a front loaded garage home versus an alley loaded versus, we have a lot of homes that have basements that could, you don't have to build a whole new unit. So I, I think there's some, like, kind of a broad scope of how it can be addressed. And I know it's really expensive to build a whole separate one, but we have a lot of interesting and big housing stock in the city.
Yes, and some large lots. I have a corner lot. It's large enough to build something like that. I don't think I'll ever afford it, but a basement finish would be a more economical way to, to create an ADU. So I think we'll see more of that type of ADU versus the freestanding, but it's, it's early in the process. So we'll, we'll see what shakes out.
I just think it's a whole can of worms, you know, the, the water tap and getting the sewer to these things. I think it's just a huge commitment of cost for residents. So I don't even know how it'd be paid for, all the infrastructure for that. So that's something I envision being very difficult.
I, I, I imagine that, just from what we've seen. The, the infrastructure costs are always borne by the developer, the property owner. It's not the responsibility of the city typically. So like I said, it, we acknowledge it's going to be expensive. The most economical route again would be a basement finish. And we'll probably craft the definition for ADUs to incorporate a variety of things to give people the most opportunity. You know, we, we are kind of afraid that, that some people think an ADU can be a tough shed. And, and it's just, it's a lot more complicated than that, and rightfully so, there are building codes that apply. So public perception and education on this is gonna be really important. So it seems like a simple thing to add to, to the code, but we understand it's gonna be complex. And we do wanna make sure it's part of the context of this overall UDC.
And there are some communities doing it really well, right? That we can just use those best practices. But I think if we just make it, it's the ease of access. So we shouldn't make it harder, is the point, I think, of the code. Just make it as easy as possible.
So I have heard from some residents who would like to make their basement another unit. There's a, you know, its own access, but they're not allowed to.
Correct.
So what are the reason, reasons for those barriers?
So currently, our zoning and land use regulations don't allow more than one dwelling unit on a single family lot. And with the comprehensive plan that the city council adopted earlier this year, it, it, it suggested the city should start allowing that. But before we can do that, we have to update our regulations to facilitate that. And that's what the UDC will hopefully facilitate.
I, I would like people to have that option.
I mean, I know you're joking about the tough shed, but with all seriousness, I mean, what we're seeing with manufactured homes and the, and the rise in the, you know, the ADU market across the metro area, I can't imagine, we're probably alone. So I mean, I don't know if we envision that, but we should probably be prepared for it because, you know, the market's gonna try to address affordability. And, and that's the reason that we're seeing the manufactured homes, because they're trying to address affordability. So I could see there being a market for those manufacturers to build something smaller that you, you could plop in somebody's backyard. I just wanted to make the point, if the state does try to push something, I sure hope we're still ready to lawyer up and fight that because I still think we should be protecting home rule for what's right for our community and city.
Councilor Camelia, do you have anything?
No comments.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Got what you need?
Thank you.
Okay, last presentation for this evening is on the Parks, Recreation, and Library Vision Plan, Mr. Herrera Mishler.
Seven and a half minutes.
We actually said my thoughts right there. I was like manufactured.
Welcome.
Hello. Hello, Mayor. Mayor Protem and councilors. My name is Tomasi Reda Mishler, and I'm the Director of Parks, Recreation, and Library. My name is Tomassurata Mishler, and I'm the Director of Parks, Recreation, and Libraries. Just absolutely delighted to introduce you to the Parks PRNL Vision Plan this evening. We're going to review the scope of the plan, what we've heard so far from the community, and we're going to go over some of the next steps for the plan as we move into a more technical phase of the planning. I'm joined by the inimitable Andrew Spurgeon, Principal Planner in Community Development, and we're very, very lucky to have him assisting us in leading the development of this plan, because it builds on the comprehensive plan, which was adopted just earlier this year. Logan Simpson is our partner in bringing together this vision plan. Logan Simpson team is working on the vision plan, and they're specialized in landscape architecture, parks, recreation, and libraries. So really good fit. Actually, in fact, Jana McKenzie, who's a senior landscape architect on the project, was responsible for the design for the Westminster City Park, including the, the concept of the grand staircase that we're so very fond of. So we're really pleased with, with their assistance so far. We certainly welcome your feedback and questions from the city council at the conclusion of my presentation. Next slide, please. Oh, I get to do it? Yay. So I'm going to start with a quick overview of the PRL system. It's a pretty incredible system of parks and open space, trails, golf, recreation programs, and libraries, and it sure as heck didn't happen by accident. It was really the result of decades of intentional actions and investment by the city. The city's long promoted the integration of green spaces with residential neighborhoods. Westminster was the second city in Colorado to implement a voter-approved open space sales tax, first in nineteen eighty-five, and then has been renewed several times, most recently in twenty twenty-one. Today, thirty-eight percent of the city's land area is some type of park, open space, or golf course. This is completely unmatched in the Denver metro area. As a municipality, we operate our own library system too, which not a lot of our neighbors have chosen to do. Our system is very heavily used, and not just our parks and open spaces and trails, but our facilities too. For example, second week of November, we had had one million forty-eight thousand visits to our recreation centers so far. So we're, it's almost record-setting pace, and certainly going to match or exceed the twenty nineteen levels pre-COVID. So a challenge for this plan is how we're going to maintain this grid system and ensure its accessibility for all of our current residents, but at the same time, looking forward to meeting the needs of future residents as well. So why should we plan now? The city completed its first sustain, hey? The city completed its first sustainability plan in twenty twenty-one, and it recently adopted the twenty forty comprehensive plan. So both of them have recommendations relative to the health, wellness, neighborhoods, natural resources, and the environment in our community. Additionally, the twenty twenty-one Transportation and Mobility Plan includes strategies for active transportation, including off-street trail network. So the PRL Vision Plan is building on this foundational work, and it's including, incorporating the community feedback that's been received to date. And then we're going to add more feedback as the plan moves along. The city's existing Parks and Recreation Master Plan was adopted in two thousand nine. So it's been a while. It had a five-year planning horizon, was very narrowly focused on parks and recreation. So it's really not suitable any longer for guiding PRL as a master plan document. Clearly, from today's presentations, we know that Westminster in twenty twenty-three is a city in transition. So back in the seventies through the nineties, that was the city's fastest growth period. That's when we saw Countryside come online and The Ranch, and a combination of developer dollars, city dollars, and partnerships created a lot of the parks and facilities that we enjoy today. The, unfortunately, a lot of these facilities are aging, and the neighborhoods are maturing and have changing demographics. So yet another reason why we need to look at PRL comprehensively. So city's nearly built out, just a few sites left for development, heard that more than once. Same way, there are fewer and fewer sites for PRL to develop new facilities as well. So there's going to be less developer contributions in the future with buildout. So there's a paradigm shift that we're experiencing here in the city as we look at how we develop these future facilities for PRNL. Also, with the buildout, there's fewer opportunities or more limited opportunities for revenues, which further emphasizes really the big need that we have to maximize the potential of our existing resources, our existing facilities, and reimagining them for future generations. The scale alone of Westminster's PRL system could require a very long planning process. However, city's strategic plan set a focused objective for completing this plan by the end of twenty twenty-four. So we're hustling. I will talk a little bit about the detailed scope in an upcoming slide, but the bottom line is that the vision plan is looking to find that balance of, with sufficient detail, actionable recommendations in support of the really efficient use of limited resources. This vision plan is really our opportunity to understand the community's greatest needs and preferences through a really single coordinated planning effort that we can use to inform the subsequent technical work that's coming. I mentioned the strategic plan. Focused Objective 41B calls for a new master plan for PRNL to address libraries, parks, golf courses, open space trails, urban tree canopy, recreation programs, and recreation facilities. So the performance and outcome measures from the strategic plan include three important outcomes. Number one is a plan that allows or provides for all residents to live within a half-mile of a park, open space, or trail access point to be completed by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. Develop management and acquisition plans that evaluate the current and future needs and opportunities of the city's public lands, programs, and urban tree canopy, again, by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And lastly, complete a city trail plan by June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. So in support of the strategic plan, we've got a parallel process underway for development, development of an urban forestry management plan. So that urban forestry management plan is underway right now, and staff will be initiating a library master plan in the second quarter of next year. PRL Vision Plan will incorporate technical work to support measurement of that half-mile access performance indicator, but we're also going to undertake a walkability and equity, equity analysis to address access and quality of parks, recreation, libraries, and open space, looking for where and to what degree inequities may exist. The result of this analysis is going to further inform both the community engagement that we're planning, as well as our looking at future PRL improvements, including trails and access points. So really, the vision plan is looking for a balance of community preferences, using the results of the technical analysis and resource considerations such as funding and capacity limitations to present an inspiring but realistic ten-to-twenty-year vision for the PRL system. In addition to the walkability work that I just discussed, some other important deliverables include the technical assessments to support the needs of the whole PRL system. We're going to look at current needs and unmet needs. We're going to study strategies to support attainment of the vision that we all agreed to through realignment of some of our programming and services. We're going to look at, really, we want to identify a manageable vision that can be supported through staff resources and realistic financial planning, as well as then prioritizing all of the plan recommendations. The multifaceted technical work will be really shaped by a lot of input from the residents, PRL stakeholders, city council, the staff, and others, other stakeholders that are engaged in the process, with the final plan coming to city council in late twenty twenty-four. By establishing an overall planning structure and implementation framework, the vision plan will inform site-specific plans for trails, trail enhancements, open space, arts and culture, libraries, and other focused actions to advance our vision. You've got an outline of the anticipated vision plan and all of its components in Attachment So we've done quite a lot of community engagement so far. We've had, really, we're starting to incorporate some of the prior feedback that I mentioned that we got through the comprehensive plan, sustainability plan, transportation and mobility plan, since there was a lot of really substantial resident input into those recent plans. We've been very actively engaged with residents of Westminster for the, sort of this initial phase of the process. This included four focus group meetings, which helped us to identify key challenges for the plan that need to be addressed. We had a community-wide open house, an online questionnaire that generated eleven hundred and five responses, and a text poll with three hundred and forty-two responses so far. We kept, we wanted to invite more community input on the plan topics with that text poll, so we left it open through the holiday lighting ceremony, and I think we've got it up to three hundred and seventy-six responses so far. There's a whole summary of all of the engagements that we've had so far in Attachment Three. So here's what we've heard so far. We've heard a real interest in assuring equitable access and inclusion, which in this case is really about providing access to PRL facilities and services equitably, and creating a sense of belonging in line with the city's vision statement. We've also heard a real desire to take care of what we already have, and that is to really protect the longevity of PRL resources through ongoing management, through investment and maintenance, and lifecycle replacement of existing PRL infrastructure, facilities, and services. We've also heard quite a strong desire for greater connectivity in the city, and by that, really, engagement has consistently identified the need to fill gaps in the trail connectivity and expand the trail system. We've heard that a lot. We also heard support for prioritizing sustainable management practices and looking for opportunities to green PRL services, operations, and, and our park sites. I thought this one was really interesting. We've heard a lot about the need to leverage partnerships with recreation districts, school districts, other PRL service providers, community organizations, and volunteers to enhance or expand what we're offering our residents efficiently and cost-effectively. Engagement also identified a love for our libraries. Westminster libraries provide more than just books, and they're an important community service center and a third space, I'm using air quotes, that should be enhanced and expanded. If you're not familiar with the concept of the third space, it's really that place between home and office that provides opportunities for community connections. So libraries are certainly one of those places. It can be Starbucks. There's all kinds of places that are like that, and they're looking for us to provide more of those third spaces. And finally, engagement participants identified a strong desire to have a home in Westminster for history, arts, and culture. The plan has four general phases, followed by implementation through more focused plans, such as updates to the open space stewardship plan, the trails plan, the library master plan, and others needed to advance the vision. So as you can see, we're currently wrapping up the first phase and beginning the technical work for the second phase. As we get into spring and summer of twenty twenty-four, we're going to have some alternative concepts for the plan to share with the public and to elicit additional feedback, determine priorities, and shape really what goes into that final plan document, really with an eye towards completing the plan by the end of twenty twenty-four as required, as requested. Knowing that there's interest in the implementation plans, like the trails plan, open space stewardship plan, and the libraries plan, we anticipate some of these may get started prior to the completion of the vision plan, subject to staffing resources, but the library master plan and the trails master plan are both budgeted. So as I, I mentioned on the previous slide, we're currently entering a more technical phase of planning work. So this is going to include building on the relevant concepts from prior plans. We're going to be inventorying our facilities and programs and doing associated assessments of each of them. Benchmark analysis with our peer communities. We're going to look at the walkability and equity analysis that I mentioned earlier. We're going to look at a level of service analysis, and we're really going to clarify PRL's core services, really making sure that we can fulfill those services first and foremost, as well as summarizing current and future needs. Through the next phase in our more, the next phase is really more technical in nature, but we're going to continue our outreach, beginning with individual interviews with the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and all of the city councilors. So you'll be getting called pretty soon to set those, those interviews up. We'll be conducting a statistically valid survey, and we're working with ETC Institute, who does the citywide community survey, and who also recently did the survey for Highland Hills Park and Recreation District. They're going to be very careful to select people that have not participated in the recent, or in the surveys, so that we're not surveying people to death. So they'll be really careful and thoughtful about that. We're also going to begin targeted outreach to some of those populations that we haven't heard enough from, so young people, non-English-speaking populations, cultural institutions, and the business community. We're going to continue to work with the Parks, Recreation, Libraries, and Open Space Board and the Youth Advisory Panel, and we recently had those two groups meet together in a focus group, and it was really fantastic. It was a great, I think everyone really got a lot out of it, and we certainly got some excellent and unexpected wisdom coming out of that group, so. We've launched a bilingual meeting in a box, and that's for households or other small groups, so you can have like a kitchen table meeting to provide input. So this is really helpful going into the holiday season. It's really difficult to schedule larger community meetings, and we have some here for you tonight if you'd like to host a small group discussion about our vision plan. And for anyone listening tonight, they can request one by email at planprl@westminsterco.gov. That's planprl@westminsterco.gov. Later in the process, we'll have an additional community-wide meeting, which will be held to weigh in on the planned concepts once the vision's further along. Future briefings with city council will also be scheduled as we hit key milestones along the way. This concludes our presentation. I'd really, I really appreciate the opportunity to brief you tonight. You know, it's been a long night. I'm really happy to answer any questions you may have. We also have Andrew here to help answer any questions, so thank you again very much for your attention.
Well, this is really exciting, even though I know I was saying, maybe we should just delay it for transit. So just a couple of questions. One is, when you were talking about sustainability. Um, in the technical analyses and sort of the, just benchmarking the existing facilities. Can we, or will we be looking at the amount of, um, you know, uh, grass versus native? Um, like Kentucky bluegrass, but you know, like just kind of looking at the water consumption? And then be able to use that as a benchmark because, um, you, you mentioned that we are looking at being more sustainable on site. So can, we are, I don't know if it's true, are we the biggest water consumer, right, in the city? So, um, as part of our work, we should be looking at how do we conserve water in the parks and our facilities?
I think that's a really important, um, really policy that, um, we need to establish through the vision plan. I know that right now, as we're replacing our aged-out irrigation systems, we're using that opportunity to look at turf and right sizing it. To, um, eliminate turf that is not serving a good purpose. And we're also partnering with the Denver Botanic Garden on adding more beautiful zero-scapes to our, um, to our properties. And I always point to outside as our number one most beautiful zero-scape in town. And, uh, that's really a model for what I see incorporating more and more. Uh, looking for opportunities to be, um, really wise in the use of our water, but not losing one bit of beauty or. You know, we have such gorgeous plant material here in Colorado. I can't wait to use more of it.
Yeah, I agree that outside of City Hall, uh, when I, is really beautiful. And I actually think it's more beautiful than when I first started working here versus, you know, once this has taken seed and taken shape, it's, I love it. Um, just, uh, as one other question about, um, our collection of inputs. So we know that we're demographically going to be evolving, um, kind of at the build-out of this vision plan, or we'll at least have started that. So, um, are we at all looking at trying to tap into older adults that already live here? Knowing that that's gonna be a good portion of our community over time and having that integrated into our input? And built, you know, what our vision is?
I think we could look into that. I don't, I don't know if we've specifically called that out as a next step, but I think that's a great suggestion. And we, I'm sure we can find, um, some opportunities either with some of the, you know, existing classes at the rec center or the library programs. But we can, you know, maybe invite ourselves in. Um, we have some other ideas about.
We have the MAC, which is such a wonderful way to connect with a lot of older adults.
Have we thought about partnering with HOAs? Cause I know a lot of them are hurting from all the grass that the city has put in their entryways and stuff. And they can't afford to water them, and the city's the one that gave them to them to take care of. And I think that is an issue all over the city.
Um, that, that is something that we did talk about, um, that, uh, ma- maintenance of rideaway actually is something that came out of our scope of work. When we, we started cutting things to get back to the year timeframe. Um, but I think, uh, Tomas has had discussions with his staff about how right-of-ways, um, at HOA interest. But elsewhere that the city maintains, um, there needs to be a plan for that maintenance.
Okay, I would like to have one of those meetings in my, in my neighborhood, okay, about our, our paths that are actually trails of the city. They use them for the city, but we pay for them and the entryway that the city put in. So I, I want to be on the list along with my HOE president.
Yeah, I look forward to that.
Okay.
Can we also have a little update with, because I know this has been brought up before with HOAs? And what's in the ODP and everything, and sometimes it's not exactly what people understand it is.
Correct.
So we need some of that, um, fact before everybody, before you go to, uh, some of these meetings.
Correct.
So that you're talking apples and apples. Because there are a couple of, um, HOAs that had the choice and they chose bluegrass, so. And they're complaining now, so.
Yeah, it's a good real.
But it was in the nineties, so I don't think it was an issue, you know, like it is now.
Some of them weren't.
Well, ours was.
It's a good point, though, and I think actually in relation to what, you know, some of the thinking you're doing here, but also. The, uh, relationship with the code update and making it easier for HOAs to update their landscaping. Um, that would be huge because we could save so much water. But it's actually quite prohibitive to, um.
And costly.
And costly, yeah, to do those updates.
So I know that the community development has hired a specialist, that this is what they do, is work with HOAs to help them look at. Um, converting their, um, some of their grass into native landscapes, particularly in their retention areas. So, um, the city is investing in helping HOAs.
Oh, our city, ours neighborhood is thirteen acres of grass.
Yeah, that's a lot of grass, so.
Anyone else?
Yeah, um, when is it that these discussions would be due by? What's your deadline to have?
With, uh, city councillors?
For, for the meeting in the box, um, ideally by end of January.
Water conservation, so Mayor Pro Tem was spot on with that. From an education standpoint, I think that's important, too. I don't know where that, I guess that's a partnership with communications and you guys, but water, educating residents and HOAs. On water conservation and how, and, you know, making it easy, you know, we provide there a few programs. But those run out pretty quickly, you know, the garden.
The garden in the box.
But I think we could be doing a lot more, just getting the word out there as to what and how to save water. That's one thing. The Arts and Culture Master Plan, when was that last approved?
Uh, well, let's see, I don't rem- I don't know when it was approved.
Um, I believe it was twenty nineteen.
Nineteen, sounds right.
Um, and then there was a, uh, actually an update published, uh, this year. Um, let's see, I thought, I had a note to myself about it somewhere. I'm not seeing it, but. Yeah, it was, that's actually one of the newer, more recent.
And council gets to approve those? I don't remember that coming to me.
That was, no, that, that didn't, th- there's nothing in it required an official adoption action. So I think it was, it was, I think it was presented in a study session environment. Um, we, we could look into that. I, that wasn't my prediction.
With the vision plan, is there an update on that master plan with this, within this?
I, yes, to the extent that we want to see how arts and culture can be blended in more at large with everything PRL does. Uh, both in our facilities, but in our landscapes and, um, you know, trail underpasses and special events. And so that's.
Public art.
That's really why the, this plan is different in that it's looking at the whole system instead of looking at these different pieces by themselves.
So yes.
Yes.
Um, the South Westminster, how much outreach have you been doing to that community?
Well, we had our community meeting down there.
The MAC.
And at, uh, the MAC. And, uh, over the course of the next month and a half or so, we're gonna be scheduling a lot of these, um. Kitchen table meetings with, um, individuals who only speak monolingual Spanish. Uh, we're partnering with Growing Home, uh, to make sure that we connect with the parent advisory group. That helped us with our police chief search and helped us with the master plan for England Garden, or England Park. Um, so we're, we've got some, I think, ambitious plans to connect with, um, the community and the southern end of town.
Okay, and the, the, so the state of the current buildings, our current facilities. Um, do you have a report or summary as to the improvements needed?
So, um, we are super blessed with an amazing facilities team. And, uh, they are really on top of exactly how our facilities are doing. We partner really closely with them. Um, so yes, that information's available, and, uh, we're gonna be tapping into it for this plan.
Can you send to council a report that summarizes our current facilities and? How bad they are and what's going to be improved on them within this vision plan?
We, we have that data. We, we actually work with our consultant to do a more concise facilities assessment. My, I ca- I would caution, it's hundreds if not thousands of pages of data to sift through, like toilet fixtures and.
Well, I don't need the, so.
But it's, it's all, it's all together.
So I'm just looking for a one-page as to, what's the current state?
Mm-hmm.
And what's gonna need to be changed?
So the good news is they're in pretty good shape, um, but there's definitely things that need to be. There's lifespan, where, life cycle issues where things are wearing out. And luckily, our, excuse me, facilities folks are really on top of that.
Um, the equity analysis, do you have more details on that? So would that include, you know, people with disabilities, um, bilingual materials?
Yeah, and, uh, the staff in PRL was actually done, they did some previous work that was really great, which was, um, on the starter slide. I think it said eighty-nine percent of everyone's within a half mile. But what we're looking at doing with this plan is, yeah, a deeper dive to look at, um. The metrics available from public health data points, um, social vulnerability, um, and the different population densities. So really taking it to the next level and then sharing with you all the results.
Will we see the results with the final piece in, in Q four of next year? Or can we see this equity analysis?
I, I would see it.
When would that be done?
I would see it, yes, uh, that would be, uh, sometime. Potentially the next time we're with you, because we, we anticipate using that to inform where we take the plan. Uh, what those recommendations end up being. So it's gonna be a key.
So that'll be done sooner than?
Yeah, that'll be, uh, probably, uh, this spring.
Okay, and the financial anal- so I'm really interested in the financial analysis of the vision plan. Meaning so, you know, if you look at the components, you have parks, recreation, open space, golf. I'm very interested in the golf piece in terms of financially. Are we actually right-sized there in terms of the budget that we have for golf? I think we have the best golf courses in the state. I, I heard, you, you correct me if I'm wrong?
Public. Public golf courses, yeah.
Public golf courses, yeah. So are we funding it? Are we overfunding, um, over-budgeting our golf? I'll be very interested in seeing, is that right-sized currently? Because we, yeah, as you know, we have lots of needs in the city, and we need to find money somewhere. So I'm curious if we're overdoing it and we can do less and still have a pristine golf course, so.
Well, that'd be an interesting study.
Is that part of this? Are you doing financial analysis with these things?
Yeah, financial assessment, yeah.
And finally, I love this meeting in the box concept. I'll do some, obviously.
Thank you. Yeah, we look forward to it.
How do we sign up? We just, is it QR code or do we tell you?
That, that, that is the meeting in the box, or meeting in an envelope. That, all the instructions are in there and how to return it back to us, so.
Okay, so it's not staff-assisted. It's us on our own with people?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
We're happy to take questions, though.
Mayor Pro Tem? Oh, I'm sorry, councillor DeMott.
Um, on the tail of what he was asking about golf, is that an enterprise, isn't there? It's set up a certain way, so it funds itself to some extent.
Largely self-funding, but we still subsidize somewhat. Um, this year, I believe we're coming in at five point six million or so of revenues, which is about six hundred thousand over budget. Over anticipated in revenues, so from a financial perspective, it's doing very well for us as a revenue stream.
Sounds good to hear.
The note of, note of reference for folks, Historic Westminster likes to be called Historic Westminster, and they don't like to refer to us down there.
Down there.
Just for everybody's reference. Um, you know, one of the things that frustrates me with these planning is it's, it's, we, we plan to death. Um, and, and I hate to see, you know, perfection be the enemy of, of productivity or progress. And I think we get stuck in that rut sometimes. Um, I, the amount of different plans in like, for example, in the Bradburn, uh, Paris Park neighborhood that I've seen. That have never had anything done with them is, it's mind-boggling. And each of them costs money, and that's money that we could spend to actually get things done. And so I hope that this doesn't end up being that. I know, uh, prior to being on council, I was asked as a community leader to be on a citizen group of, around master planning for Stanley Lake. Um, open space, and the talk at the time was about completing the trail around that. And so much of that, I don't think, has had much done with it. You know, so I just wanna see that we're actually getting stuff done. One of the other things that I'm curious about, and this came up because of the whole disc golf conversation, which I understand the complexities around that. However, I still am in favor of us figuring out a, a solution to that problem, because that's something that we already know the community wants. But one of the things that was brought up to me by that community member that is pretty passionate about that. Is that there were funds from Jefferson County Open Space used for that. So as we go through this process and we inventory everything, how are we making sure that we're tracking things? That other government entities gave us dollars for, be it state grants, be it county grants. Um, you know, because I have to imagine there is some level of agreement for some amount of time. When there were those kind of dollars from outside entities tied to it. Um, and I don't know, you know, the realities around disc golf, but it was an interesting point that was brought up. Um, and I wanted to make sure, you know, make sure that in this process, that there's some way that we're tracking that. And being true to those, you know, dollars that were spent for a specific need.
Yeah, I think that's a really good point. The, uh, grant that we got, uh, for the disc golf was fifteen thousand dollars in two thousand and three. And the city matched it with fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, we looked up, uh, the, all the paperwork we could find. Thank goodness for Laserfish. We found everything that, um. The proposal and the grant and the letter, there weren't any, uh, restrictions or covenants that said you have to give us back our disc golf baskets. If you don't use them after twenty years. Um, so I think we're okay, uh, from that regard. But, uh, I think the point of tracking these, these, um, commitments that are made. For example, when we buy open space and Jeff- Jefferson County provides money for that. Very, they put very, very clear restrictions, uh, in the deeds as to what can and can't be done with that, uh, land. Uh, so, yeah, the, I think it's really important.
Well, and, and I would put across, you know, just cause we can't do it, doesn't mean we should. And if there was a, a, you know, a community push and we went after those dollars, just because, um, there's not teeth to say you have to keep that. Doesn't necessarily mean we shouldn't. I mean, that if people were using it and it's an amenity that people were enjoying, you know, I think we need to be mindful of that. The only other point that I wanted to bring up is around the, the turf. Um, I understand us being, you know, the biggest user of water. Um, we wanna make sure that we're, uh, doing what we ask everybody else to do as far as conserving. But I think we also wanna be mindful of, people do use that, that turf, and they do use that open space. And I have had plenty of complaints over my six years where we said, you know, that's not widely used. And then I get the phone calls. So I, you know, I wanna make sure that we're, uh, mindful of that, that people do like those open spaces. And, um, you know, where it makes sense to do the natural grasses and stuff, you know, great. Um, but there are other mechanisms for us to, um, look at our water uses, such, such as our irrigation systems. And modernizing them and, and, you know, even using different water practices. So I just, I wanted to at least make a note of that as you go through this process.
I've also heard, conservation is great, but you conserve too much, you lose it. The state has a law, if you don't use it, you lose it. And I know that we sold our water really cheap, like last week, for a dollar twenty per thousand, when we could have sold it to our residents. So we have to have a, we walk a fine line, I have to say. Be, you, being too conservative and then losing the water. Cause the state makes, you lose it if you don't use it. So that's a point I wanna make about water.
My list has trees. I know that you're looking at your urban stuff, but we can't, because it's happened in the past. We have had two thousand dollars for a land owner because we planted a tree in front of their house. And, and everybody's neighborhood has different things, but when you have a sidewalk and then land over here. And we come in and. But when you have a sidewalk and then land over here, and we come in and plant, but when that tree becomes dead and it costs two thousand dollars, we put a note on their door, get it down, you've got ten days, and the cost is two thousand dollars. That's wrong. So I hope that we plant trees where people either agree that they will water it or you don't plant it and burden them, because that's happened in the past, and that's not fair. I had disc golf on my, on my list. I like the comment of care for what we have, and I know people have been talking about we need future rec centers. Talk about subsidy. We know a couple of weeks ago, that question was asked, and we subsidized it sixty percent. So in some of our areas, we purposefully, I know, didn't put rec center because it's so close to two other entities. So where you've talked about partnerships all night, I just think there's partnerships to be had to help people have some things, but we have to work with our partners to do that. And do not forget, the residents of Jeffco have been paying and do pay a tax for Jeffco libraries, and we do not have one in the city of Westminster. If there's nothing else, this meeting's adjourned. Ten fifty-eight.